Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to twenty total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For twenty-one to thirty-nine total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for forty-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Interpreters are available for assistance with in-person public comment. Please connect with them if you are in need of services.
Hay servicios de interpretación disponibles para asistir con los comentarios públicos en persona. Por favor, habla con un interprete si necesita estos servicios.
Yet et deum megnab annu cune canum tarkmanichicari cunec miacek tarkmanchihet oknu cian hamar.
All right. Good evening, and welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, July 29, 2025. And as you may notice, we're in a different order tonight. I will be presiding over our meeting this evening for Mayor Perez. She's excited to announce that she has welcomed a beautiful baby girl. Both mom and baby are doing well, and we send her our well wishes to the entire family during this special time. Please join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with the positive and collective support for our beloved community. The city council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight together. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city of Burbank. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, how are you doing this evening?
I'm terrific. How are you, Vice Mayor?
I'm ready to rock and roll.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Let's do it.
Councilmember Anthony.
Present.
Councilmember Mullins.
Here.
Councilmember Rizotti.
I am here.
And Vice Mayor Tagahashi.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Tonight, there will be four periods of public comment. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and must submit cards or call before the general public comment period begins. The first public comment period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you are here in person and wish to speak during your during the general public comment, you should have submitted a yellow public comment card to address the council. If you would like to participate in the general public comment over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. If you would like to participate in public comment for the public hearing, which will come later in the meeting, over the phone, please call anytime between now and the beginning of the public hearing at the same number, 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. Additional public comment periods will be available for following each report to the council later this evening. Interpreters are also available for assistance, as was mentioned in the announcements. We have Spanish and Armenian interpreters here with us this evening, sitting in the front row. Please connect with them if you are in need of services during public comment. The first announcement we have this evening is a note that item number five on the consent agenda, adoption of a resolution of the parking authority of the city of Burbank approving an entry and license agreement with nearby businesses to use a trash enclosure at the 133 East Orange Grove Avenue public parking structure and delegating signature authority -- this is like the longest title of a -- and I am at the same -- to the executive director as a chairman's designee and adoption of a resolution of the parking authority -- I wasn't kidding -- of the city of Burbank establishing a purchasing procedure and authorizing the executive director to procure, approve, and execute certain agreements for professional services and non-professional goods and services in accordance with the purchasing procedure has been removed and will be brought to the council at a later date. Weren't you glad I read all that? Yeah, yeah, me too. All right. But we still have three additional announcements this evening, and I will not be reading them. They will be shown on the video.
The following are announcements for July 29, 2025. The city of Burbank is proud to present the return of the Media Industry Expo and Job Fair on Friday, August 1, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Woodbury University. Hosted by Burbank Public Library and Woodbury University, this dynamic event brings together job seekers, media professionals, and creative organizations for a day of connection, collaboration, and career exploration. Recent graduates, seasoned professionals, and anyone looking to enter the media industry should not miss this incredible opportunity to gain insight, make connections, and take the next step in their career. Learn more at cityofburbankjobfair.com. Join the Burbank Police Department at this year's National Night Out event. This annual event aims to promote healthy police community partnerships and provides fun activities and exhibits for the whole family. The event will be held at Johnny Carson Park on Tuesday, August 5, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. See you there. Ready to go more places with Metro and Burbank Bus? Qualifying Burbank and LA County residents can enjoy 20 free rides every month on Metro and Burbank Bus through Metro's Life program. Sign up is easy, and riders can get unlimited free rides for the first 90 days. Visit metro.net/writing/fairs/life to learn more. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report for us tonight?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So I'd like to call up our Field Operations Division Captain, Mark Stoll, who is going to introduce our newest Community Services Officer.
Welcome, Captain Stoll.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Mark Stoll. I am the captain in charge of the Field Operations Division. One of my responsibilities is traffic and patrol, and I'm here to give you a brief report out on our new Community Service Officer position. I know this was a priority of council. We've hired Yessenia. We have one employee hired. We're currently recruiting for another one. This is Yessenia Cuchias. She previously has worked for us as both a cadet and in our property and emergency room, and she has now been hired. We're in the training process. If you see her around, I have -- do you have the presentation up? Community Service Officer, one of her many goals will be assisting in responding to incidents that may not require a police officer to respond to. This could be crime reports that occurred overnight, the prior day, things where the level of investigative work may not be what is required of a police officer, responding to other non-emergencies such as traffic collisions, assisting at traffic collisions with traffic control, public events, schools, providing a high visibility, you know, school will be starting soon. So we hope to get her along with our Traffic Bureau and our LAS parking to try to provide some positive impact to drop off and pick up. It's been a big complaint as far as all of that. She's also going to work on parking enforcement, dealing with abandoned vehicles and impounds where we don't have to send a police officer. We also hope to get her involved in crime prevention, dealing with merchants, neighborhood groups, and other citizens as far as education and outreach. So this is Yessenia. She's also bilingual in Spanish, which will help connect with other people in the community. If you can bring up the -- this is the uniform she's going to be wearing. It's going to be a gray polo shirt, clearly marked with Community Service Officer on it. And this is the vehicle you'll see. We have several of these. It has the ability to carry traffic cones and other items as needed. So it'll be a high-visibility vehicle at schools, parks, or other facilities. So again, we have Yessenia on board. She'll be doing training for about two months, and then hopefully she'll be on her own, and we hope to onboard another employee as soon as we can find one.
Great. Thank you, Captain. Any brief questions? Thank you. This is an initiative that Chief Albanese worked on and got -- did a lot of work to get this going. I really appreciate that. And thank you, Quintero, Chief Quintero, for continuing that effort. And thank you to you, Captain.
Yeah, it's a big deal, and we hope to be able to expand it. It's just a matter of finding the right people and getting them trained to do what we think is in the best interest of the department and the community.
Great. Thank you so much. Really looking forward to seeing the community.
Thank you.
Believe it or not, folks, we are already at the place in the schedule where we're at public comment. What time is it? So now is the time for general public comment. I'll be calling out the speaker's name as well as the person who is next in line to speak. In order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion, we have a designated seat in the front row for speakers who are next up on the podium. A timer is available on the podium as well. This is also the last call for anyone who needs an interpreter or those staff will be released for the evening. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address the agendized report, but will not be able to speak on that item in the following segment. Please state your name for the record when you come up. All right. Have our interpreters had any requests for assistance? All right. Well, then thank you for being here and enjoy the rest of your evening. All right. So the general public comment period is now beginning, and no additional cards or calls will be accepted. And Madam City Clerk, how many public comment cards do we have, and how many callers do we have?
Vice Mayor Tagahashi, we have 20 in-person cards and four callers, five callers now.
So that's 25 speakers, so that means two minutes each. All right. So I'll call the name of the person speaking and the next up on deck. So first, we're going to have Marcia Ramos, followed by Cheryl Weaver. Oh, a lot of comments. Welcome, Ms. Ramos.
Good evening, Council. I'm Marcia Ramos, the appointed director to the Metropolitan Water District Board. I'm here to provide you with a few updates. As you know, Burbank does not have any water rights. We receive imported water from the state water project and the Colorado River. During these hot summer months, we all need to be mindful of using our water efficiently. Burbank has consistently done a great job at conserving water. Thank you. However, we will need more long-term reliable sources of water to keep up with our future water demands from increasing in housing, growth, and in changing climate. Currently, in Sacramento, the legislature is debating the governor's proposal to streamline planning aspects of the Delta Conveyance Project. The proposal is consistent with your legislative platform. The DCP has made tremendous progress in recent years with the certification of the Environmental Impact Report and securing financial resources from MWD and water agencies throughout the state of California. However, the project is facing complicated regulatory framework and bureaucratic delays. This legislative proposal by the governor is intended to streamline the processes to a point where informed decisions can be made regarding construction investment. These measures could save more than $365 million for every year of avoided delay. The project is critical for Burbank. Without changes to how the state water project operates, we could see substantial reductions in one of our two primary sources of water. Skip, 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 skip. And finally, I want to thank the BWP Water and Power for their important work on water infrastructure policy, legislation, and planning. Thanks to General Manager Mandeep Samra, Richard Wilson, and Jason Maruka, and all at BWP, their input on MWD issues has been invaluable, insightful, and essential to me, especially now. It is a critical time in water management and planning, and from my perspective, this is an exceptional team. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up, we'll have Cheryl Weaver, followed by Ron Backs. Welcome, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you for having me here and being able to talk. I'm Cheryl Weaver, local resident, local realtor, and Section 8 housing provider. Okay, I get it. Local government thinks that they're working to regulate housing providers it creates to protect renters who they see as a majority voter. In reality, it's tipping the balance of competition, which is the basis of a healthy market to push out mom-and-pop housing providers in favor of corporate-controlled housing. These complicated and difficult, expensive regulations such as a registry and other rental controls are options that favor corporations that have deep pockets with more legal and advisory and more resources than the diversification with financial -- to financially weather any financial loss. Most property owners face the addition of regulations with regards to the use of, control of their assets. As more financial risk and sphere grows, housing providers have had enough risk with rising utility costs, repair, material costs skyrocketing, and volatile employment market that is affecting their tenants. There are thousands of renters and housing providers that are both fine in Burbank, and the status quo works well for them. This is most likely why the landlord-tenant commission has seen such a low number of cases over the years. The folks that do not need to help or identified by the criteria that are the ones that need the help are qualified by those who qualify for Section 8. Section 8 housing providers need your help in order to continue to provide Section 8 housing. The current market or the current status says that you have to take about three months to have your unit approved, and in that time you just lose income. And then on top of that, it'll take another two months before you get the first payment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you. Next up is Ron Backs, followed by Mike Durian. Welcome, Mr. Backs. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. An article in the Burbank Leader dated May 29, 2023 was recently updated and republished July 23, 2025. It quotes me as saying, "I don't know what, short of raising the building, would require a tenant to be displaced." I was wrong. I never envisioned a housing provider deferring repairs and preventative maintenance to the extent reported by the tenants of the Maui Apartments. The evidence suggests the owner had that policy, and as a result, he was able to keep rents low. But the bill eventually comes due. When he passed, his heirs were unable to retain the property, probably due to the combination of the need to obtain a mortgage to settle the estate, Prop 19 causing property taxes to increase drastically, and AB 1482 restricting the ability to adjust the rents to cover the increased operating expenses. All these add up to reducing the bottom line, possibly to where it is in the red. The heirs had to list the property at a wholesale price because anyone without deep pockets would face the same hurdles. Enter a well-positioned professional or corporate entity. The buyer took the savings and invested in major repairs. Renovation evictions were necessary because it's not feasible to open up the walls to replace the supply lines, then seal them, open up the walls to replace the sewer lines, then seal them back up, replace the electrical system, remediate any mold issues that may have been -- may not have been mentioned but probably existed based on the maintenance of the building had received, all on a unit-by-unit basis. A more extensive approach is necessary, which results in the unit under repaired not being habitable. I'm out of time, so we're going to skip to the last paragraph. So, if you want to increase the burden housing providers are experiencing due to these and other factors that have brought us to this current rental market mess, enact rent control, a rent registry, and other measures that punish them.
That's your time. Thank you. Next up is Mike Durian, followed by Daniel Smith.
Good evening, council members. 633 North Rosemary, a four-unit property recently sold for $1.92 million. With 25% down payment, which is an investment of $480,000, the monthly loss on that property would have been $3,000 a month. That's $36,000 a year without earthquake insurance. Add earthquake insurance, now you're losing over $4,000 a month, more than $50,000 a year. So, to those that are saying housing providers are making a killing, I say please do the math. And if you don't know how, before making assumptions, it would be wise to get informed. It tends to save a lot of embarrassment. People love to ask how many properties do you own, as if it's a strike against you. A better question is, what did you sacrifice to afford even one? I'm not envious of those who own several properties. I respect the risk, discipline, responsibility it takes to get there. And here's something we should all be aware of. New York City has over 26,000 rent-stabilized units sitting vacant right now because of economics no longer work under rent control, and rent registry has been a dismal failure. So let's stop pretending this policy solved housing supply. I have noticed that when policies are suggested from here that favor tenants or challenge housing providers, some council members rush to defend on the pretense of clarifying things. But I urge you to also stand up for Burbank and say something the next time you hear, "LA, my Burbank," and not let us become just another version of Los Angeles. And to those that say, "LA, my Burbank," why wait for LA to be Burbank?
Thank you.
LA is waiting for you right now.
Thank you. Next up is Daniel Smith, followed by Julie Markarian.
Hi, good evening, Council. Thank you. My name is Danny. I own a four-unit building in Burbank. I am a mom-and-pop landlord. Despite every economist, left, right, center, apolitical, telling you that rent control and rent stabilization do not work and actually raise rents in an area, you are marching inexorably off that cliff. Unless you believe that every person who's ever earned a degree in economics knows less than you do, then you are willfully making a policy mistake. The good people of the tenants' union want lower rents. I think that's a fair request. Unfortunately, you're going to make their situation worse. That's what the data tells us. Rents are controlled by supply and demand. Demand for housing in Burbank is not decreasing anytime soon, which means that you need to make sure the supply of housing outpaces that demand. Do you think regulating housing providers will encourage or discourage investment in housing in Burbank? What you're considering is not a housing-first policy. It's, in fact, an anti-housing policy. You're creating an uncertain regulatory environment that will discourage investment in this city. I have four tenants. I've actually never raised the rent on any of them. Why? Because they're good tenants. I want to keep them, and I have to compete for their business. I have to maintain my building and maintain good relations because I am competing with other landlords in a free marketplace. The moment you enact rent restrictions, which begin with a rent registry, I will have no choice but to raise my tenants' rent the maximum allowable amount every single year because I'm smart enough to know what's coming. This is what happens. It's been the story for decades in LA. It's not out of spite or retribution. I swear, I have to do this. You will force me to do this because that's the only way to protect myself and my business. I'll stop investing in my business -- in my building. Why bother? I certainly won't bring any more capital into the Burbank market, and I won't be alone. Consider your choices wisely, please. The road to housing hell is paved with good intentions.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Julie Markarian, followed by Kristi Malouf.
Hi, my name is Julie Markarian. I am with the Apartment Owners Association of California. We represent over 20,000 housing providers in California. I'm coming to you representing the housing providers, but also myself as a housing provider. I'm not sure if any of you realize how many rentals there are on the market right now. On Zillow alone, it shows in Burbank there's over 500 rental units on the market. I want to say that we strongly oppose a rent registry. This is not helpful when we're trying to have a tenant-landlord relationship. When was the last time that any of you engaged with a landlord? When was the last time when you have asked about our rising costs? When was the last time you have shown any appreciation for the housing providers that provide housing to your constituents? When was the last time you allowed us to have a seat at the table? Because that is lacking. That's what I'm saying. It's lacking. You haven't considered that we have -- we do not have unlimited resources. And you have left us out of the conversation altogether, which is not -- which is not fair. You cater to the BTU at our expense. It's not at your expense. It's at our expense. Now, Councilwoman Vice Mayor Tagahashi, you have said over and over that you're waiting for more data. How much more data do you need when your constituents overwhelmingly have voted against rent control? How much more data do you need? Isn't that enough for you? Isn't that enough for you, Anthony? I mean, let's be real here. You have not considered us.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Kristi Malouf, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members, staff. That's a -- I echo the two previous comments. Definitely. Run a registry. We don't need a registry. We can find the information on the internet. The only thing that a rent registry will do is cause more overhead for Burbankan owners. It will not solve a housing crisis. How about if you use the money that would go into a rental registry to keep up, to police it, take that extra money, have a fund for people who need a little extra help with rent, food, who would qualify? Just a thought. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is David Donahue, followed by Candace -- and I apologize -- Soderstrom.
If you would please play the video.
Few questions that have come in I think are very important to address. And it has to do with our project design and our dedicated bus lanes. As most of you on this call are aware, and as I mentioned earlier, we are we are advancing project design in accordance with the board-approved project description, the final environmental impact report. So the question for you, Anthony, is that may differ from what residents in Burbank might be hearing from our coordination with city council. So could you address that concern for our Burbank residents?
Yeah, absolutely, and it's a, it's a great question. So, we have a very positive and collaborative relationship with city of Burbank staff, and we continue to advance the design, as Matt indicated, in accordance with the Metro Board-approved project description, which specifically details dedicated side-running bus lanes on Olive Avenue. We are obviously aware of the city council letter that was drafted back in 2022, essentially stating opposition to the dedicated lanes on Olive. And we're confident that through ongoing collaboration, we'll be able to work through that. But as it relates to our project design, we are successfully advancing it, showing the dedicated lanes on Olive between Buena Vista and Lake per that board-approved project description, and believe that the open issue will get resolved.
Thank you, Anthony. The next one's a design question.
What the report is talking about is a dedicated lane. So I just want to call that out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Candace Soderstrom, followed by Susan O'Garrell. Apologize for the mispronunciation.
Please play a video, too.
It's a comparison of existing North Hollywood to Pasadena Express Line 501 and the proposed BRT. Line 501 has 15 stops compared to 22 for the BRT. Line 501 serves North Hollywood, Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. The NOHO BRT also serves Eagle Rock. The existing 2024 ridership on the 501 line is 1,274 weekday trips. Oddly, Metro projects 30,000 day-one trips for the BRT. Line 501 has a runtime of between 35 and 50 minutes. The NOHO BRT is anticipated to have a runtime of 70 minutes.
The environmental impact report makes a study of its ridership projections and how they differ from the 501 ridership information. And I think like you did a good job of highlighting that one of the big differences is in evaluating the project alternatives for this BRT line, it was determined that the intermediate recreation, employment, and residential centers that the 501 bypasses, but that this project is designed to incorporate, are really a big difference between why ridership on the, on the 501 line, which may not be as robust as we'd hope, doesn't necessarily indicate...
Thank you. Thank you for sharing the video. Next up is Susan O'Garrell, followed by, I'm sorry if I can read the writing here, Mark Scroggs. Sorry, Mark.
Good evening. The demand for express bus service between North Hollywood and Pasadena via Burbank and Glendale has been grossly overstated. Metro's fantasy forecast of 30,000 daily riders a year on the BRT does not reflect reality and has no validity in today's post-pandemic world where more people work from home, transit is perceived as unsafe, there are ever-more extreme heat days, and people worry about disease transmission in confined and dirty spaces. I've done a study of ridership on the Metro local lines serving the area and the two other existing BRT lines, which I'm providing to you. News flash: The existing BRT lines get between 14,000 and 16,000 daily trips with more attractors. The benefits of the BRT are significantly lower, and the costs are significantly higher than represented by Metro's staff or considered by its board when it approved the project. The BRT will cost taxpayers at least $317 million. If SB 79 passes, the existence of the BRT will trigger the right of developers to construct five- and six-story, very-high-density apartment buildings that are exempt from parking and rent control requirements and which do not need to be affordable within one-half mile on either side of the BRT alignment in single-family residential neighborhoods and commercial areas. One of the major costs of the BRT would be the destruction of Burbank's middle-class neighborhoods and the loss of substantial amount of owner-occupied and family housing. I'm asking you to pull your support for the BRT, to ask the Metro Board to cancel the project and to direct Public Works not to issue any permits for BRT construction in Burbank Rites of Way. You need to do this, or your legacy will be the destruction of Burbank neighborhoods and harm to the commercial strip along the BRT alignment. Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Mark Scroggs, followed by Jim Lane.
Good evening. I'm Mark Scroggs. And even sometimes I've had assistance from my wife, and I can't read my handwriting either. I'm speaking tonight about when preparing for the media fair this week, or Friday. I've been putting together information. We're doing a booth on understanding talent representation, which is not about signing actors, so no one, we don't want that. But I've learned a lot from this. Even with the tax incentives, and look, I've got a client who's just booked a film with one of the new tax incentives. It's going to be shooting locally, but it's only like $800 a week. So there's not much money coming in from these jobs for people. That's been one of the complaints about a lot of these, like, low-budget films. And so a lot of people are cutting back. A lot of the people, there's a whole industry of people working with talent, headshots, acting schools. I mean, there was a lot of kids' stuff here for so long. A lot of that's kind of moved away. But talent reps and that, people are moving away. I was surprised how many people I talked to, about 30, about 20 of them don't even live here anymore, and I didn't know that. You know, they just have moved, or they're going to move. So it's something to keep in mind because there's going to be more vacant spaces and that soon here. And it's something that we need to deal with because the money is tight. People are moving into other areas of representation, like live events, sports, representing restaurants and buildings and different things, much, much more. So that's something to keep in mind. I'm going to talk to that with several people. I wanted to bring up something about restaurants because I've noticed how badly most of them are doing right now. We'll do it another time because most of them just are doing badly. Except when we went to Los Amigos on Friday night for happy hour, it was full because a lot of the crew members from the Warner Brothers and Disney were there. You could just tell. So you just need to bring back more businesses like that to keep some of these places going. We'll talk more about that later because I think it's, it's kind of crucial. You're going to see a lot of places go away because they've been hit for a long time. So that's it for tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Jim Lane, followed by Hensy Yen.
Thank you. You know you're getting old when you can't read your handwriting. So, two weeks ago, when city council was responding to initial oral comments, Mr. Rosati mentioned that the information being brought to the council, specifically on the issue of tenants, tenant rights, that the information the council was getting was not reliable. But he felt that the tide was turning. And then he addressed a particular speaker who turned the phrase "don't LA my Burbank" and turned it around and said, "Please, LA my Burbank." He admonished that speaker and said, "Be careful what you wish for." And then I'm going to quote him. He said, "I move people from LA to Burbank every day. And if you heard the stories, you wouldn't want to live in LA," end quote. So I have a couple of questions. How many days exactly is that? When did those, when did that period of daily moving people into Burbank start? I think we need to know that because, you know, I'm thinking about the FPPC, you know, letter to the city about Mr. Rosati's potential conflicts when it comes to this particular issue. So I think that we need to know exactly how many days that was and when it started. I also want to talk about this phrase, "LA, don't LA my Burbank," because Mr. Rosati relied on this kind of implicit fear. Fear of what exactly? And I think some of us realize how coded that phrase really is. I hearken back to last fall's election, when two flyers were produced by the California Association of Realtors, one which slung mud at Mr. Anthony, totally awful, and another one that said that the Burbank crime rate was up, when in fact it was actually down. Mr. Rosati is a member of, I believe, the California Association of Realtors and never commented on any of those unreliable bits of information. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Up next is Hensy Yen, followed by Jackie Waltman.
Good evening. I'm Hensy Yen, and I own an apartment building like 35 years. So I live in Burbank as well. So I wanted to tell you is five of the 18 of my tenants, they lived with me like more than 20 years. This is my, we manage it, we own it, we take care of the tenants. And also half of the 18, they stayed with me more than 10 years. So I sort of say is, I really take care of the tenants. And we follow the guideline. What I know right now is like 10% max for the increased rent. Now I heard about something now become like 4%, like a, you know, cap. But I think the rental, the tenant and owners, they got all kind of competitions. You know, if you don't take care of your tenants, the tenant's going to be move away, move away. And you ridiculous to raise the rent, the tenant going to be move out. So I totally oppose what I heard like 4% rent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Jackie Waltman, followed by Elizabeth Bax.
Hi, city council. The last meeting, one of the Burbank tenant unions members said, "Housing providers should get a real job." Now, it's this kind of misinformation arrogance and hostility that creates problems in housing. If rent control and registries are so great, why are the cities with the strictest, most stringent rent controls and registries, i.e. San Francisco and Los Angeles, have the most, have the most unaffordable housing? Now, you don't have to really be a rocket scientist to say, hmm, maybe something's wrong here. Rent control will help a few people living here now, but you really are going to ace out the younger generation who's going to try to live in Burbank. It's just not going to work because these rent controls are going to keep housing unavailable. So it's not going to be affordable, and it's not going to be available. Rent increases don't happen in a vacuum. A 4% rent cap doesn't, isn't sustainable against a 30% insurance rate. Another Burbank tenant member said, "Oh, a 30% insurance raise, you know, that, that doesn't equate to a $200 a month rental increase." Well, he's right. Because a 30% increase in one of my properties was $4,800. Now, I don't know how you figure that I'm going to be able to maintain this if I am going to somehow have some kind of fantasy income that is going to help me keep these properties. I don't raise rents. I have, most of my tenants have been with me 20 years in Burbank. They're very, very stable. I think in 20 years, I've had two less than 5% increases. Now, if you do do this, I can't tell you more.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Bax, followed by Diana Pulver. I'm going to show a video.
Should we take a vote on that first, just for the sake of keeping it clean? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No? Let's do a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Schultz?
Yes, just like that. 5-0. Congratulations.
To move the motion of creating the subcommittee.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're just going to go by acclamation. All in favor, say aye. Okay, chair's opinion, that's a 5-0. Any nays? No?
Good evening, council members. That small clip is from when most of you were on, were council members on March 26, 2024, voting unanimously to approve both the cooperative agreement between Burbank and LA Metro and to keep the 2022 letter on mixed flow on Olive intact, and to create a subcommittee consisting of Vice Mayor Takahashi and Councilmember Mullins. At the last meeting, I raised a concern about the city of Burbank's position on the LA Metro BRT project along Olive Avenue, specifically whether the city supported mixed-flow traffic or a dedicated bus lane. City Councilmember Mullins was clear in her support for mixed flow, and I appreciate that transparency. But Vice Mayor Takahashi, I noticed that you didn't share your position then. But at the Metro's recent design open house, I heard you speak with other residents, and it sounded like you might be reconsidering your vote or even voting yes, your vote for mixed flow as yes. I say this as not a challenge, but asked respectfully, has your position changed? It is most important that we understand where each of you stand, especially on something as impactful as this. Many of us are trying to make sense of what feels like mixed messages. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Diana Pulver, followed by Harry T. Murray.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. Please reconsider the implementation of a rent registry. It will create an additional burden, both administrative and financial, for housing providers. For us mom-and-pop housing providers, keeping up with increasing regulations over our business is already a full-time job in itself. And financially, we are feeling the squeeze of increasing costs day-to-day of maintenance, repairs, utilities, taxes, insurance, et cetera. If the city provides, proceeds with a rent registry, the costs associated should be borne entirely by the city so that it would be fair and equitable, and the financial burden would not be borne, and with the financial burden would be borne by all and not just housing providers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Harry T. Murray, followed by Eddie Pollan.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members, Harry T. Murray, Burbank Association of Realtors. Couple of weeks ago, I provided some data, some papers showing the, from Kenneth Mejia, showing how much council members in the city of Los Angeles make, $244,000. Your brethren over at the, over at the LA City Council makes $244,000 a year. I highlighted that reason because it's been known, and he's very proud of this, that Hugo Soto Martinez is a renter. And he's highlighted the fact that he lives in a rent-controlled apartment, making $244,000 a year. To utilize your words, those apartments are utilized for rent-burdened individuals. And someone who makes $244,000 is not rent-burdened at all. What he is, is he's effectively stealing from someone that truly needs affordable housing. And I say this because there is no means test for housing control. There is no means test for any form of rent control whatsoever. Someone making $244,000 a year, like Hugo Soto Martinez, lives in a rent-controlled apartment building. You guys voted to subsidize for some move-outs. You utilized an organization. They required income statements from individuals. Individuals that apply for income assistance from the Burbank Water and Power have to provide income statements, tax returns, to show that they are, they qualify for it. There is no qualification requested for rent control. Section 8 housing requires income verification. And the best, the best way that I can explain this is rent control is a direct subsidization from an owner to a tenant. If you wish to subsidize, create a program. Subsidize all you want. In the words of the best socialist in the world, Mr. Spock, "The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Eddie Pollan, followed by Daniel.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and city council members. My name is Eddie Pollan, resident of Burbank, rising to speak tonight against the proposed ordinance on city commissions. I believe it is a mistake to reduce the size of the Transportation Commission from seven to five members. The current makeup of the commission allows a diversity of voices to provide input on our city's transportation infrastructure. The proposed... attend monthly meetings due to outside commitments. This proposal would make it impossible to meet core many months, especially in the summer and around holidays. As I speak to you tonight about democratic access to our commissions, I also want to share concerns I have for what has been communicated by city staff as city policy to not broadcast Transportation Commission meetings with the exception of public comment. Burbank residents who are unable to attend commission meetings in person, whether due to disability or family or work commitments, should not lose access to public discussions that affect their lives as members of our community. I encourage the council to review this policy with staff to ensure broader access to our city government. I'll also, in my remaining time, just want to comment about the leaf blower plan. I believe the city should really focus on what we do as a city before we burden our residents with extra requirements, that we should, the, I would hope that city council would direct staff to immediately begin changing over from gas-powered equipment to electric equipment. I think it's setting an example, and I think it's the right thing to do, and I think the city will appreciate that. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Daniel, followed by Helen P., and that's my last card.
Good evening, City Council. Acting Mayor Takahashi. Gas power leaf blowers, I agree with Eddie on this one. I'd like to see them gone, but I think the city is a good place to start with that. I also agree, please don't reduce commission sizes. I was also at the Burbank Safe Streets BRT presentation the other week. Saw some of you Councilmembers there. I had some great conversations. Councilmember Mullins, Councilmember Takahashi. I look forward to discussions continuing about BRT, as well as about housing. I think these are good incremental steps. I'm excited about the BRT, bus lanes connecting many of these cities that deserve to be connected, that interact with each other. I wish the cycling connectivity could have been improved. Two streets in particular, Olive and Glen Oaks, which are very, very fast, active streets. I wish we could slow those down, make them safer for bikers. I bike to work every day. I refuse to bike on Glen Oaks. There's no bike lanes in Burbank. As soon as it comes from Glen, Glendale into Burbank, the bike lanes disappear. So I wish, I hope that can be a priority in the near future. And then, talking about rent stabilization. Rent stabilization does not aim to fix market problems. It aims to keep people housed, and it's extremely effective in keeping people housed. Burbank Tenant Union's primary goal is to keep families housed. We believe human displacement is a more pressing concern than business displacement. If you truly are a good landlord who doesn't raise rent much and takes care of your tenants, our proposed protections won't affect you. We've heard this time and again, threats of maximum rent increases and evictions if the city implements protections. This shows the unfair and inherent power dynamic between tenants and landlords, and exactly why we as tenants need these protections. I ask the city to consider a rent freeze and eviction moratorium to protect, to protect this city's rent burden tenant majority from vindictive landlords as we discuss these protections. Thank you.
Thank you. Good timing. Next up is Helen P., and that's my last card.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for hearing my complaint. I oppose the registry idea. It's a waste of time. The landlords have so much work that they do already. Please leave the rent control alone. Stop trying to pass it. Nobody wants it. No one will invest in Burbank if you pass this rent registry. No rent, no on rent registry. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have completed in-person general public comment, and we'll be moving on to call-in public comment.
Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry.
We are actually having a little technical difficulties with the phones right now. We have five callers. If you could give us a two-minute break?
Okay.
Just two. I think we could do it, and we could regroup and get back.
All right. Call in for a two-minute break.[851.44]
All right, and we're back. Welcome back to the meeting. All right, Madam City Clerk, first, for callers calling in, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have callers on the line?
Vice Mayor Tagahashi, we have five.
All right, let's bring them in.
The first caller is Shirley Tom.
Welcome, Ms. Tom, you have two minutes.
The first caller is Shirley Tom.
Welcome, Ms. Tom, you have two minutes.
Okay, hello. Good evening, City Council members. I want to share my personal experience why I became a housing provider. My late husband and I, we saved up 12 years to buy rental property in Burbank without rent control. We refused to buy any properties in L.A. because of the crazy rent control policy. You know, my life savings is in this property that I own, and we worked very hard, and especially we were on one family income. The reason why I own a property is to provide housing opportunities for the community, and also provide cash flow for additional family income and save future retirement income and any life unexpected events, for example, the death of my spouse, my husband. Being a landlord is not glamorous, it's all humbleness. You know, I take care of the property, I sweep cigarette butts off the city sidewalk, put a dog coop on the city parkway, and clean and disinfect tractors to avoid any ants and rodents and coyotes coming onto my property. I also have a budget each month, and after all the bills, you know, pay all the bills, whatever is left over, that's my paycheck for the end of the month. And also, you know, that's why I live off, because I'm a little. And also, tenants work in L.A., refuse to live in L.A. Tenants rather to live in Burbank with simple quality of life, while the hassle rent control and other housing regulations. My tenants never complain or move out when I increase rent, because I take care of them. I take care of the maintenance and future improvement. Both former and current tenants have complimented that my late husband and I are the best housing providers that we ever had. Remember, happy tenants make happy housing providers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Andre Dionisian.
Hello, Mr. Dionisian, you have two minutes.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Andre Dionisian, and I'm a member of the Burbank Transportation Commission. I'm not speaking on behalf of the commission, but as a member of our community. Tonight, you will consider an ordinance to dramatically slash seats across our various boards and commissions. As a member of one of those commissions, I can attest to the passion and dedication we place in these volunteer positions. We all dedicate time out of our schedules, away from our jobs and families, to serve our city and our council for nothing more than the betterment of our community. To cut these seats is to cut voices out of our body politic. These reductions save no public dollars, recover no staff hours, and yield us no positive externalities. Unless the goal is to silence voices in so many critical debates across our boards and commissions, this action is simply not in the public interest and does not faithfully serve the voters. In this time of great national upheaval, democracy is being threatened from the halls of the White House to, it would seem, the steps of our own City Hall. Only a few weeks ago, I led a crowd of Burbank residents on a march to City Hall, and I remember telling them that the promise of America lives on in each and every one of us, and that in Burbank we will not give up the reins of our democratic institution without a fight. And so here I am, fighting to preserve the most direct line we have to participate in a government built to serve us. Council members, I implore you not to vote the way which may seem expedient or conformative. Vote the way which fans the flames of civic engagement and not smothers it. Thank you and good night.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Joe Pimienta.
Welcome, Mr. Pimienta, you have two minutes.
Good evening, City Council staff and everyone present in the chamber. I hope your evening is going well. I want to agree with everything that the previous caller said. Also, I do want to give, but first thing that I want to talk about is that I want to give huge praises both to the Starlight Bowl and to the Park and Rec Department for everything they did for the Encanto sing-along event that happened a couple of weeks ago. Fantastic, just love it when that happens. Now, on other things, I want to call in support for the BRT, because, again, as I've said multiple times, what really makes our streets safer is having more means of transportation. And you know what makes the streets way less safe? Is way more cars. Giving priority to cars is exactly what makes the streets unsafe to either bike on or to be a pedestrian on. And lastly, when it comes to tenant protections, as you have all heard many times me speak about this, I think I just want to say the like, when a lot of these landlords come over and they start talking about how if more protections are implemented, then they're going to be forced to sell, and we don't want to lose Burbank to big landlords, I don't really see them organizing against big landlords. So, that's kind of where I wonder, like, well, if they are really of the problem that we all think they are, big landlords, you know, ending up owning the city, organize against them, put more regulations on them, so we can be sure that we can keep as many residents happy. I got an opinion here. And lastly, last time that I called, I called against this saying of, "Don't LA my Burbank," because it is racially insensitive. But also, I just want to keep saying that the BTU says "our" Burbank, because neighbors live here, and we care about the people that live here, rather than individual causes. So, other than that, thank you for your time, thank you for your service, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Zee.
Thank you for calling in, Zee, you have two minutes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council of Burbank. I would like to speak to you as both a renter and a small landlord. As a renter here in Burbank, I have the opportunity to have a small landlord who also raises rents on an as-needed basis. For this, I am very grateful. As a landlord, believe me, I've worked very hard. I have to be handy person, plumber, gardener, office manager, recycle and organic police. I try to do as much as possible to keep my costs down, so that I don't have to raise rents. Although this year has becoming harder to do so, like a good neighbor, my insurance company canceled me. I now pay more than double the insurance as before. With half the coverage, and with the new company making the new rail trim neighbors' trees and pay for electric company reports, et cetera, not to mention water pipes breaking, et cetera, my rents are way below market. Many times, I have absorbed the cost. My choice. As for the person at the last meeting on the phone, anonymous, who said, "Sell your property and get a real job, like the rest of us," this is a job. The reality is, most small landlords are working incredibly hard to create safe, comfortable homes that benefit tenants and our community alike, good people who care about their tenants. As my mother would have said, "Put yourself in the other person's shoes," I ask as a renter and a small landlord, please do not implement these rent registries. Thank you so much, or we will disappear like travel agencies.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please.
That was our last caller.
Thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the general public comment, period, closed. Now's the time for a brief response from City Council, the City Manager or City Attorney. City Manager, City Attorney? All right, Council, brief comments? Councilmember Anthony.
Yeah, just thank you for everyone coming down. I did see a number of new faces, so thank you to the new folks coming. You may not, you may or may not know that some of the topics discussed during public comment were not on the agenda. That's fine. The open public comment is for anything on city business. I encourage folks who are new to take a look at our agenda forecast, and you will see when items that you're talking about are coming up. We encourage you to show up on those days. That's the day that we will be voting on stuff. We are limited by the Brown Act. We can't discuss future agenda items if they're not on the agenda tonight. So, thank you all for coming down, and hopefully see a few of you back when some of the items do come up in the future.
Councilmember Mullins?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank former Mayor and Commissioner Ramos for giving us an update on our water quality, and so thank you for coming tonight and giving us an update. And for everyone else that spoke about BRT and the housing, I concur with Councilmember Anthony. I'm really excited to see a lot of new faces. We're always happy to welcome you here and hear from you directly. So, this is, for me personally, it's something good that I need to see new faces, I need to hear from you. So, I appreciate you coming here and sharing a lot of your thoughts and some of your concerns. So, thank you. But yes, please keep track of the agenda, and when the item is coming back, it doesn't mean you don't come here on Tuesday nights when we're here, but make sure you show up on the night that we are going to be discussing whether it's the BRT item or the housing item. I think that's it. And as far as boards and commissions, we're going to address that when we talk about, when we address the ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Razadi?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you to former Mayor Ramos for coming down and giving us your report. It's important that, your work is important, and we appreciate that. Ms. Weaver, thank you for your comments and perspective from the housing providers' point of view. Mr. Bax, thank you for outlining the difference between corporations and mom and pops, and what that could potentially look like. Mr. Darian, thank you again for framing the sacrifices that investors make. You know, keep talking about landlord, tenant, landlord, tenant. Something tells me that dollars to donuts, I bet Mr. Anthony and I could get in a room with you guys, we could hash this out in two hours, offsite. But I'd really like to hash it out.
I'm wondering, Mr. City Attorney, can I join them?
Yeah.
Well, this isn't on the agenda, so I'd rather you not talk about it at all.
And then, Ms. Markarian, thank you for coming. And just outlining what the needs are for tenants and the expenses that have gone up. A lot of people have experienced that. Mr. Donahue for the BRT video. Yes, I can tell you that I am disappointed that this council is being ignored in our position. You know, there's been several speakers regarding BRT, asking for our positions. I think there's a lot of anxiety about this coming back on the agenda. Being fresh off the campaign trail, I think everyone knows my position. I think my position is now wavering to no BRT, but we'll talk about that in the near future. Mr. Lane, thank you for coming. The election is over. And the whole comment about "LA my Burbank," you know, why don't people flock to Los Angeles if rent control is so great? You would think there'd be a mass exodus out of Burbank, and there's a reason why, and it's because those units are substandard. And I stand by my word, I'm a 25-year professional, and I can tell you, I move people to Burbank every day for various Ms. Bax, you heard my position. I think all the council members should state their position. Again, I know there's a lot of anxiety, so... Mr. Tumerian, thank you for your picture of subsidized housing, because that's exactly what would happen. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Razadi. All right, I echo many of the sentiments of my council, fellow council members. Thank you to all who came tonight to speak and called and emailed. I also want to thank those who I met with during the past couple of weeks. I really appreciate when you all reach out, and we have meetings one-on-one, get much deeper discussions, much more information between each other. And specifically, I wanted to thank Mr. Darian for our meeting earlier this week, and we have a few of you who are in the audience today, I'm going to have a meeting with you coming up. I look forward to those meetings. And then, on the topic of housing, it's set to come back, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, it's coming back in October, right?
Correct.
Great. Okay, so, you are welcome, and I truly believe in First Amendment rights and free speech, and you're welcome to come here and speak on this item as often as you like. However, we cannot discuss it publicly, and we cannot discuss it on the dais until October. So, I encourage you to meet with us as well, because we can have deeper discussions on it, more than two minutes at the dais. And then, let's see. And then, lastly, on the topic of the BRT, since I was directly asked, is that I'm listening to everybody, and we have a city position right now. The letter is our city position. That's what we are working with. And if I were to publicly state anything other than that, any thoughts I had, any just like dreams or ways I'm going in my mind, without the rest of the council, that would be a Brown Act violation. However, that said, I want to say that I'm looking at all alternatives and just being innovative as ideas that we can look at the best way to address this issue, because there are lots of ideas out there, and I believe that we can do what we did with the downtown portion, again, with the rest of it, when we really talk through it. But that will come back, and we will address it, and we will have a full discussion there. But you're always welcome to contact me directly. And to that point, my phone number is 818-252-9014, and I have a calendar link on the city website that you can do a direct meeting with me on the calendar. But I'd love to hear your ideas. I'm always looking for more information before the items come before us on dais. Okay? All right. Oh, and I also want to just quickly appreciate two of the pieces of information. Mr. Bax, thank you so much for this list of ordinances and statewide laws that affect you. And to Ms. O'Garrell, thank you for bringing this in with the BRT information. I will go over it. So, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tagahashi. We have five items this evening with the postponement of item five. Item one is approval of the City Council minutes of the joint meeting of July 15, 2025, and the dark meeting of July 22, 2025. Number two is adoption of a resolution denying an appeal of the permit appeals panel's decision to uphold a fine due to violation of Burbank Municipal Code Section 7-4-104, illegal pruning of city tree at 1083 East Harvard Road, Burbank 91501, submitted by Marine Bazagnan. Item three is adoption of a resolution approving a cooperative agreement with Mccone Development Incorporated for the Orange Grove Parking Structure Restoration Project. Item four is adoption of a resolution of the Council of the City of Burbank approving the Measure A Homeless Initiative Agreement between the County of Los Angeles and the City of Burbank Local Solutions Fund, number HI-25-014, awarding the City of Burbank $380,708 for fiscal year 2025-2026, authorizing the City Manager or his designee to execute the agreement in any future amendments, and approval to amend the fiscal year 2025-2026 adopted budget and appropriate $708 to the local solutions program. Item five was postponed, so our final item is approval of a professional services agreement with Moca, M-O-C-A Systems Incorporated, for project management services related to the new Burbank Central Library and Civic Center project. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar excluding item number five.
Okay, second?
I'll second, and before we take a vote, on item number six, if it's all right, I'd love to have the Moca representatives, if they could just come up and say hi and introduce themselves. This is a really big project that we have coming up for the library, and if you could just take a quick 30 seconds and just say hi at the microphone, if you could, please, very quickly.
Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Sorry, I'm a little tall. Yeah, thank you so much for having us. We're thrilled to be selected and be a part of this generational project. For a little bit of background, we are all licensed architects, working in the design and construction industry for a long time, doing big, complex, politically challenging projects. And we're thrilled to be here as your project manager to help bring this amazing, once-in-a-generation project to fruition. I'm Houston Drum. I'm the principal in charge here in the Southern California office. This is Min Pan. He's a senior manager with us, and David Hart, executive vice president.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Welcome, thank you. All right, so we have a... We have a first and a second. Madam City Clerk, we take the roll call. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes, on all, noting the absence of number five.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes, on all except five.
Councilmember Razadi?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
Yes.
Thank you. Great, thank you all. Next up, we have public hearing. This is the time and place for the hearing regarding Burbank Water and Power's Health Goals Report for 2022, 2023, and 2024. If you wish to comment on this item in person, please present a salmon public hearing card to the city clerk. If you wish to speak over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. You'll be placed in a queue until the public hearing comment begins. Before we begin, are there any disclosures?
No.
Related to this hearing, including ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest, et cetera?
No.
No? Me neither. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
They have.
As well as the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents?
That is correct.
And has the city received any written communications on this matter, and have they been provided to all council members?
We received no correspondences on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Will the representative of BWP's Water Division please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Nari Gavandian, Water Quality Manager with Burbank Water and Power, and I'm here today to present a summary of Burbank Public Health Code Report for the year 2022, 2023, and 2024. Before I begin, I would like to mention that Burbank water is safe, and it has met and continues to meet all the state and federal regulatory levels. So, public health code report is a requirement under California Health and Safety Code, and that applies to all water systems that have over 10,000 service connections, and it must be completed every three years. Burbank water system has over 27,000 service connections. The purpose of the public health code report is to notify consumers if any of the constituents in the drinking water was exceeded or was above its respective public health code or maximum contaminant level goals. In this context, constituents refer to the elements in the water. The, this target goals are set at a very low levels and are not legally enforceable. The determination of the health risk at this low level is theoretical and are based on risk assessment with multiple calculation and mathematical extrapolations. These are separate and legally enforceable levels. The purpose of public health code report is very similar to Prop 65 warning signs. When we enter to a restaurant, to hospitals, or we purchase consumer products, we often see the Prop 65 signs, which are warning us about the presence of chemicals known to the state of California. about the presence of chemicals known to the state of California to cause cancer, birth defect, or other reproductive harm. In other words, Prop 65 is a right-to-know law, which meaning it doesn't ban the product, rather it informs consumers about the potential exposure, chemical exposure. So very similar concept to Public Health Goal. Those are non-regulatory and non-enforceable, but we have to report in our water systems if there are any incidences. Now, California Office of Environmental Health has heard assessment, which is also known as OEHA, establishes public health goal levels that are non-enforceable. For those constituents that do not have a public health goal, USCPA establishes maximum contaminant level goals, which will be referred to as MCLGs. These are, again, are non-enforceable and are only target levels. Now, the MCLGs are set to zero, which means for any water system, any detection must be reported. During the year 2022, 2023, and 2024, Burbank Water System had six constituents that were above their respective Public Health Goal and maximum contaminant level goals. However, these levels were below the legally enforceable levels. Since most of these elements are naturally occurring, the detections are consistent with other utilities within California. This information is summarized in the Burbank Water and Power Currents, also known as Annual Report, and was mailed to our customers in July of 2023, 2024. And the most recent one was this year, 2025. More detailed information about the constituents and their sources are available online and are actually included in attachments to the report. Burbank Water is safe. Again, I would like to mention that Burbank Water is safe and it meets all the state and federal regulatory levels. With this, I would like to conclude today's Public Health Goal Report, and I'll be available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council on this public hearing item only. The public comment period is now beginning, and no additional cards will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, I have one card here. Do we have any callers on the line? No callers? No callers? All right, then. We have one speaker for three minutes. And our speaker is Gavin Quinton.
Hey there, council. Good to see you all. Vice Mayor Takahashi, Councilmember Mullins, and Councilmember Anthony and Rosati looking forward to your cage match. We should get that on the agenda. Yeah, no, you know, when I come up here, I only have questions. I don't have a position to take or anything like that. Yeah, I attended a meeting run by city staff about Lockheed's soil vapor extraction project. And I just kind of have some additional questions about that, maybe that we could either direct to staff or just have you guys look into in the background. For the public, you know, there's a really complicated history of industrial waste by Lockheed in Burbank, including, you know, the pollution of Chrome 6 and other volatile organic compounds. But bottom line is Burbank's water is safe to drink. Burbank Water and Power makes sure to blend water. That does have, you know, maybe slightly elevated readings. I think it's all blended, actually. So that's not a problem. My questions are kind of more about that project and maybe some of the health concerns that we could address while we're looking at that. So yeah, these soil vapor extraction facilities, I believe, clean some of those chemicals from the soil and release it into the air. So my question is really related to, is there a certain limit? And how that affects air quality? Is there, you know, per unit amount that they're allowed to release? A 2012 order by the, by state regulators, a man named Samuel Unger, he wrote a letter to Lockheed saying Lockheed remediation soil vapor, sorry, soil excavation activities were performed using cleanup goals that are no longer scientifically defensible, nor are they protective of human health slash the environment and groundwater. Lockheed contested that. I'm a bit confused about what he might have been on. And there's, I think, just such a long history of regulatory action. But I know that elevated readings, when that SVE facility stopped in 2009, kind of necessitated this new project, because remediation activities have been going on for the last couple of decades. So there's that question. You know, what was maybe the concern that necessitated we look back at this project? Were those elevated levels a concern? And is there a concern also that waste deposits in the Burbank Superfund Site could shift or threaten groundwater in the future because those remediation actions ceased? Yeah. And then just the question about air quality stuff. And that's kind of it from me. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your comment. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public hearing public comment period closed. Would the representatives of BWP's Water Division like to make any further comments or provide responses to any of the points raised during public comment?
Well, thank you. This is Montive Samro, General Manager of Water and Power. So first of all, I'm going to ask the gentleman. We'd be happy to meet with you. And I think you asked very great questions. Richard Wilson, who's our Assistant General Manager of Water and Power, will come up here and answer some of those specific questions. But I think it's better that we talk offline and we could go through some of that analysis, because we're always working through with the Lockheed site. So I definitely want to just open that and allow him to ask his questions privately as well. But Richard is going to come up here and answer those questions specifically that were brought up.
Yeah. If I could, I'd like to provide part of the response to that. The project that the speaker is referring to relates to what they call in-situ contamination or contaminants left under the Empire Center in the soil, not in the groundwater. So it doesn't relate to this water quality report. The soil vapor extraction system is intended to remove contamination left in the soil by extracting vapors through the soil. And they extract the vapors, they capture it through treatment media, and they contain the contaminants, dispose of them per the regulations. And so it doesn't cause an air quality impact. That prior facility was in place prior to 1999. It was in operation for a number of years. And in simple terms, the measurement of this project, not related to the groundwater, but related to contamination left under the Empire Center, the contaminant levels kind of flatlined, meaning they thought the system, in layman's terms, had removed as much as going to be removed. And the system was shut off for a number of years. And they found that there was rebound, soil vapor rebound, under the Empire Center. And the state regulatory agencies required them to go back, retest the soil, test the vapor in the soil. And now there is a proposed project moving through the planning department to implement a new, more efficient, smaller vapor extraction system called a VES, again, removing vapor from the soil, not the groundwater. And there's a completely different permitting process with the state regulatory agencies. And that work is happening victory placed behind Walmart by the loading dock. So separate project, not related to this hearing. And the vapor extraction method is intended for, again, soil contamination, not groundwater contamination. And it's quite possible that that's required to protect the, you know, the contamination historically was released in the soil, and it migrated. And so one means to prevent it from getting into the groundwater is to treat it in the soil. And so that's an ongoing process, again, not related to this hearing. But that's a layperson's explanation of that process. It's a 26, 27-year-old, ongoing remediation. And that matter will be noticed when it goes to Planning Commission.
Thank you. Richard Wilson, Assistant General Manager for Water Systems. Thank you, Joe, for that description of what's going on in the soil. And it's not related to water. But the same chemicals that produce that vapor in the soil did migrate into the groundwater. And our treatment plant is what cleans up those volatile organic compounds, which was produced by the Lockheed Corporation. So our treatment plant removes them, and it is not found in our drinking water. And the plume that you mentioned, sir, that does have a tendency to migrate in the groundwater. And one of the purposes of our treatment plant in our wells is to reduce the amount of the volatile organic compounds in the water, and then also to contain the area in which they're located so that they can be removed from the wells.
Great. Thank you. Any other further comments? No?
I would just like to. I would like to invite you out to the BOU so we can give you a tour, so you can ask all the questions you want. And you will have a very good idea of how the plant operates when you're done.
Thank you very much.
All right. Does the council have any questions to ask? Yes. Councilmember Anthony?
You guys know he's a reporter, right? He'll ask a lot of questions. I encourage you to go check it out, though. Yeah. So I want to get into a little bit about the constituents that were detected. It says we're doing this every three years. Do we test the water daily? Is it once every three years? Do we monitor it monthly and then compile the three years together? Like, how is that testing done? The frequency?
Yes. So each of those constituents have different, you know, monitoring schedule. For the most part, those are, if I can have the presentation, please, so I could show you the last slide? Thank you.
Last slide?
Yeah.
Next to last slide?
Yeah. Okay. This one. Oh, okay. That's a hidden. But anyways, I believe it's including a packet. But I'll, yeah, that's the, okay, there.
This is attachment one, page A1-1 in the Stafford.
Yeah, this is the one that, yes. So if we start with bromide, we don't really have bromide in our system. It's coming from Metropolitan. So we don't test for bromide regularly. So all the results are based on what Metropolitan sends us. And in terms of other ones, gross alpha and uranium, those are being sampled every quarter from different, the source water and the treatment, the compliance point. As far as for the hexylvalan chromium, that's a weekly sample. Every week, we collect all that samples. The total coliform is, again, a weekly sample. We have 26 sample sites that are designed, that are strategically located throughout the city. And we collect those samples every week, 26 samples. We're required to collect 100 sample because of the size of our system, but we collect 104. Pretty much, we go above and beyond to collect additional samples to make sure that everything is collected. So yeah, each constituents, each of these ones that are parameters that have different monitoring schedule, and those are come from our regulator, State Water Resources Control Board. Division of Drinking Water is our regulator. We have a monitoring schedule, and therefore, all of those assessments is happening. And then as a result of that, we have a monitoring schedule, which, based on that, we sample those.
Okay. Are these the only constituents that we test for, these six?
No. We actually, we sampled about 25,000 samples throughout the, annually.
25,000 samples?
25,000.
Samples of water testing?
Different, yes. Different.
So how many constituents are we looking for?
Those are the constituents. Those are different constituents that we're sampling. 160, 160 constituents.
I see. So there's 160 things that we look for in our water?
Correct.
And over the last three years, we've only found six?
That were above their respective public health.
That exceeded?
Maximum contaminant.
The public health goal, and, okay.
But none exceeded their regulatory level, which is the MCL.
Sure. No, that's fine. I appreciate that. So only six. Do we keep an update of how many of these are repeat offenders in a three-year period? Or, because basically, what I'm getting at is, what is our process once we've detected one of the constituents? Do we go out and talk to the people in the area? Do we try to find out the cause of it? Like, once we see an exceeded PHG, and again, it's not regulatory exceeding, but it's hit us a little bit of a spike, do we go out and try to investigate? Or what's our process there?
No. Because, well, as water systems, our focus is maximum contaminant levels. Obviously, if the levels are high, very high, we have an 80% cap there. If it's about that, about that 80% of that goal MCL, then that's the time when we have to investigate. But when it's at low level, because technically, those levels are so low that they're technically and economically, it's really not feasible to look for any treatment for those particular ones.
Because the very next testing could come down?
Yes.
The level, and it's fine.
Exactly. Because specifically about the, even the laboratories for those analytical methods, they do not have the capability to analyze below that low levels. So these are just an estimate, those are just the levels set.
These are mathematical ratios at the smallest level that we are seeing numbers change.
Smallest level.
Okay.
That is correct.
I got you. So again, just to reiterate, only six out of 120 things, 160, sorry, six out of 160 that we've even seen the tiniest increment in. And the rest of the time, we've been fine, way below the regulatory levels. I mean, everyone knows, I tell everybody, I drink Burbank water straight from the tap because it tastes great. It is fantastic water, and it's very clean. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? No?
No. The question I had, what would you do in the event that the water was tested below? And how you treat it? But you did answer that question. I'm thinking, on a smaller level of a pool, when your water is off in the pool, you have to add chemicals, you have to balance it somehow. So obviously, there is a lot of ways that the water level has to be brought up to the required reading that we want. So I think it's important that, I mean, that was my question with staff when I met regarding this report. I mean, do you drink the water from Burbank?
Yes.
And so, you know, that's exactly when people ask me, do you drink it? I want to be able to feel confident to say, yes, I do drink it. So thank you for that.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosati? Okay. I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. I also drink the tap water. I think it tastes great, but.
It tastes good. It's good tasting tap water.
But this is a debate in our family. So we have the tap water and the delivered water, and we each do their own thing. So the question is about taste. Do any of these contaminants cause the taste to change? And is there an effect on it?
So the taste in water is come from different, combination of different factors that can be. One can be as a result of disinfection, where we're using chlorine in our water, which is a requirement by law. It might be as a result, some people are very sensitive to the taste, to the odor, to the taste. So they could feel that, some people are not. So that all depends on, it all depends on also the pipeline, too. The piping, how old the pipelines are, how they stay, you know, their pipeline, how long they're there or not used. So we encourage the customers, when they're drinking water, they can flush for a couple of seconds, and then that way, they can bring fresh water to the system, and they can drink that.
Great. And to that point, you know, a lot of refrigerators have the filters, they have Brita filters. Do they filter out any of those things, either on this list or any of the chemicals you just mentioned about that treat it?
It all depends on the filters, depending on what type of filters they have. It can be different, depending on that, if it's oral, again, it all depends on the type of a filter that they're using. Maybe yes, maybe not. Again, it's all depend on that, and on the levels, sometimes not, depending on the composition of that particular filter that they have. But for the most part, I mean, the water is safe, so they can just use the water without it.
Most of the filters in the refrigerators are GAC, and they primarily remove the chlorine disinfectant that's in the water to maintain bacteriological safety in the distribution system until it gets to the resident and the taps. So basically, that's what they're primarily removing, just the chlorine, so you don't get that unusual taste.
Right. Okay. Great. Thank you. And then one other question. In our city's history that you're aware of, have we ever exceeded the health levels before? Or even gotten close?
The public health goal?
Yeah.
Yes. So as I mentioned, most of these ones are naturally occurring. So since they're naturally occurring and the levels are very low, it is very consistent with other utilities. When I look at other utilities, pretty much, we all have to share the same, pretty much, part in terms of uranium or other contaminants that we already mentioned about those. So yes, those are consistent with other utilities. And, but because those levels are really not just a very, very low level, so they're not really significantly affecting that or having any health risk issues for the consumers.
Most public health goals are zero. So we have to report any detection, however small it may be, we have to report that.
I see. Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. I see. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, if there's no more questions, all right, then I now declare the public hearing closed. Thank you so much for answering our questions. And the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure?
I think there's, I mean...
Just review and accept.
Review and accept. Questions have been answered, so I'm happy to accept the report as it is. And I do want to thank staff, and I think it's your first presentation with the council.
Oh, yeah, it's great.
You did a great job, direct and to the point, and it's always very helpful. Yeah, I'm happy with the report.
Is that a motion, or do we need a vote on this?
We prefer a motion and a second and a vote.
To accept, okay. So I make a motion to accept the Public Health Goals Report for calendar year 2022, 2023, and 2024.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. We have two reports to council this evening. After staff's presentation, the city will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on this item during the first period of general public comment. Please be sure to submit your public comment card now, as no additional public comment cards will be accepted once the comment period commences following staff's presentation. So the first report to council tonight is the consideration of options and impacts of a potential citywide gas-powered leaf blower ban. I welcome Ms. Katie Pica, Administrative Officer for the Community Development Department, to please present the report. Welcome, Ms. Pica.
Thank you, and good evening, Vice Mayor Tagahashi and members of the City Council. My name is Katie Pica and I'm the Administrative Officer for the Community Development Department. With me today is my colleague Andrea Cisneros, and she is the Co-Compliance Manager. Tonight, you'll be considering the options and impacts of a potential citywide gas-powered leaf blower ban. May I please have the presentation? Okay, so a little background for you. On November 15, 2022, then-Vice Mayor Nick Schultz had requested a report on banning gas-powered leaf blowers. And then October 19, 2023, then Councilmember Tamla Tagahashi requested a memorandum on the ban. On September 10, 2024, the first step report was presented to City Council addressing both of these requests. At that point, council directed staff to return with options and impacts of a potential citywide ban. Tonight, we're presenting two options for your consideration. One is to allow the use of gas-powered leaf blowers to be eliminated through attrition, or to direct staff to develop and introduce a draft ordinance banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Currently, there's active state legislation addressing climate change and the purchase of small off-road engines. Those are also known as SOARs. The state executive order N 7920 was signed by Governor Gavin Newsom and addresses the climate change crisis, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and accelerating zero emission technology adoption. Assembly Bill 1346 was a result of this executive order, and this bill bans the sale of new gas-powered SOARs from 2024 onwards. The only exceptions to this were for generators and large pressure washers until 2028. The Assembly Bill directed the California Air Resources Board, also known as CARB, to develop cost-effective and technologically feasible regulations. So new SOAR sales must be zero emission for new engines, that's model year 2024 or later, and SOARs must be certified and labeled to meet emission standards. While the regulations now require new SOAR models sold in California be zero emission, they do not ban the use, repair, or sale of existing gas powers, gas-powered SOARs. This means existing equipment can be used until end of life, or until they cannot be repaired. So there's some benefits to a citywide ban, and that includes reduced air pollution, which could lead to improved air quality, a potential for respiratory health improvements, and a slight noise reduction, which is the city's largest leaf blower complaint. A ban may reduce the number of noise complaints from leaf blower noise. We've averaged about 21 complaints per year since 2022 through 2004. Gas leaf blowers are used by residents, housing providers, private businesses and their employees. That includes landscaping companies and the city. It has been reported that these types of ordinances have improved urban air and noise quality while imposing burdens related to the transition to electrical from gas-powered leaf blowers, and highlighting the need for stronger enforcement and sustained business support. Going deeper into these impacts, we find that there are financial impacts. If the city were to implement an immediate ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers, the financial impact would affect residents, private industry, and the city. The replacement cost of one gas-powered leaf blower to a commercial-grade battery-operated power version is estimated at approximately 1,400 to about 5,700. That's plus the cost of electricity, replacement batteries, purchasing the charger, infrastructure, and general maintenance. There's also a potential for job loss or reduction in hours due to financial impacts, and it's possible that this type of ban may have a disparate impact, including accessibility and equity concerns. The city would likely have enforcement limitations and resistance. We would need to develop enforcement standards, which may require additional resources such as staff. It has also been suggested that battery-powered leaf blowers may not deliver the same power output as gas-powered counterparts, which reduces efficiency, increases the need for longer work hours in order to accommodate. And while this gas-powered leaf blower is louder in terms of decibels, the sound frequency of an electric leaf blower is said to be higher. So understanding these frequency differences helps explain why a gas-powered leaf blower is often considered more disruptive despite sometimes having similar or even lower frequency components than their electrical counterparts. However, with a higher frequency model, the sound pitch may travel farther and have a higher pitch. And even though battery-operated leaf blowers reduce emissions, there's also e-waste to consider. Battery tools rely on lithium batteries and electricity, which carry their own environmental footprints and create a additional e-waste. Lastly, if a ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers is implemented, the city will need to renegotiate or rebid all existing contracts and may reduce the number of landscapers willing to do business in the city. Further, large businesses with existing landscape maintenance contracts may also see an increase in contract costs with the ban. So based on this information, we're presenting two options for consideration. Option one, allow the use of gas-powered leaf blowers to be eliminated through attrition. CARB's current regulatory ban on sales states that equipment purchased or replaced must be zero emission, which will lead to attrition over time. This option minimizes financial impacts and financial burdens, such as a transition cost, job loss, battery power limitations, resistance and challenges to enforcement, and disparate impact. The second option is to direct staff to develop a draft ordinance for City Council consideration banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Several local cities have implemented a ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers, and each of these bans were accompanied by rebates, enforcement mechanisms, and community outreach. With option two, an immediate ban is not recommended. A two-year phase approach would be proposed. This approach is very similar to how the city implemented the single-use plastics ban and the model used by the city of Glendale for their gas-powered leaf blower ban. In year one, we'd focus on education and outreach. This includes education to residents and affected businesses on how to transition to zero emission equipment, the benefits of transitioning, and resources to offset transition costs. This would be provided through various methods, such as city website postings, mailers, flyers available at public counters, and a community workshop. Staff has been working with the city's Public Information Office on the most effective way to implement this type of process. At year two, the ban would take effect alongside continuing education and outreach, but would not be fully enforced until one year from the effective date. During this time, co-compliance staff would assist with field outreach when responding to complaints by providing education materials to the resident or business owners about the ban, how to transition their equipment, and financial Implementing a ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers will result in additional costs to the city, which is currently estimated at about $185,000. And this is in one-time costs, and this to upgrade and/or replace the city's equipment and vehicles. This does not include reoccurring costs of maintenance, electricity for charging, or implementation costs for enforcement measures such as staffing costs. The city's currently transitioned 16 of the 30 leaf blowers in Parks and Recreation, and nine of the 27 leaf blowers in Public Works. Only the remaining 32 gas leaf blowers were accosted in this estimate. It should be noted that the city may be eligible for the Commercial Electric Lawn and Garden Equipment Incentive and Exchange Program, which reduces the purchase price of commercial-grade battery electric lawn and garden equipment by up to 85%. An immediate ban is not recommended. Adverse impacts to residents, landscapers, and the city would outweigh potential benefits. Existing regulations will phase out gas-powered leaf blowers over time. As of January 1, 2024, the sale of new gas-powered SOARs is banned statewide. Therefore, it is recommended that council move forward with option one and allow the use of gas-powered leaf blowers to be eliminated through attrition. Alternatively, council may direct staff to develop a draft ordinance banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. It is anticipated that a draft ordinance can be presented for council consideration prior to the end of 2025. So this concludes my presentation. I, along with representatives from the Community Development Department and Parks and Recreation Departments, are here and prepared to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. We'll take public comment now, and then we'll have some questions for you in a bit. All right, the public comment period for this report to council is now beginning, and no additional cards will be accepted. We, I see we have two comment cards. Is that what we have? Okay, then you have three minutes each, up to three minutes each. First, I have David Donahue, followed by Vicky Kirshenbaum. Welcome, Mr. Donahue.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Tagahashi and council members. My name is David Donahue. First, since we had a relatively muted first public comment, congratulations to Mayor Perez on the birth of her daughter. I think that's super exciting news. I hope mom and baby and everybody is doing well. Before I get my comments, I want to applaud staff on probably one of the most concise, balanced presentations I'm seeing, because what'd they start with? They start with the cause, the cost, the impact. I think that's how everything should be deliberated and sort of presented to this body. You're elected to represent us. There have been issues before this body that we have not seen both sides of the issue. I think we actually got a really great report that talked about the cost, the impact, who is who it is going to potentially hurt. That is why I am here to vote, to voice my support of option number one. I don't think that an immediate ban is needed or necessary. But again, I want to applaud staff for an exceptional report, one that should be modeled on almost every topic. And thank you for your service. And again, congratulations to Mayor Perez and her partner for the birth of their child. Take care.
Thank you. Next up, we have Vicky Kirshenbaum. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Vicky Kirshenbaum. I am a Burbank resident. I do find the staff report on gas-powered leaf blowers to be flawed. First of all, there's no acknowledgement, this is no time to impose regulations on local gardeners. Many are facing unbelievable risks from ICE. But staff could have suggested a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers on city property only, or better yet, could have suggested replicating Glendale's successful policies. In the spring of 2020, Glendale initiated a pilot project on eight city properties, transitioning to all handheld electric landscaping equipment, not just leaf blowers. And then Glendale scaled up to all 147 city properties. They work with American Green Zone Alliance to train workers, implement the policies, with a press conference on completion on March 26, 2024, which I attended. Second, I do think the staff report leaves out the health and environmental impacts, especially high levels of benzene, formaldehyde, fine particulates emitted by gas-powered landscaping equipment, all norm course engines. This equipment is so highly polluting, so damaging to workers and community health, and so great a contributor to greenhouse gas emissions. That's why California banned the sale of new gas-powered two-stroke engine equipment as of January 1, 2024. But I do think the biggest flaw here is the cost analysis. At the press conference, after transitioning all their city properties, Glendale staff and council and AGSA repeatedly mentioned the cost savings. And I did share with council the Santa Cruz study, the University of Arkansas study. And the study, the studies show, sure, there is an upfront cost, but you begin to come out ahead in about a year, even without rebates, even accounting for the batteries. And why? You don't have to buy gas, or oil, or filters. There's no maintenance causes like with an electric car. That is not here in the report, the money saved from not buying those fossil fuels. Electricity is so much cheaper. I also think the staff report far overestimates the cost of a commercial electric leaf blower. My quick Google search showed like about $800. So I feel that we are wasting money by refusing to go electric, and I suggest council direct staff to talk to Glendale about their successful policies, make an accurate cost analysis, and initiate a pilot project on city property, transitioning to all electric for all handheld landscaping equipment.
Thank you. We have now completed public comment for this report to council. Okay. All right, council, do we have any questions for staff?
Sorry, I was just wondering if staff could perhaps address some of the questions? Thank you. I'm just curious to hear some of that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. You know, if we are directed to develop an ordinance, it would give us an opportunity to establish periods of time, how we would want to do this, that would be least impactful to the community, to the city. We can develop grace periods for affected landscaping and gardening business owners. It's a work in process, and of course, we're going to be very collaborative with the community, with businesses, with the city and how we do this. We're very mindful of the process, who it affects, how it affects everyone involved. We are aware that there could be some disparate impact from this process, and we definitely want to keep that in mind and take cautionary steps as we develop this to ensure we're doing it the right way, so everyone's least impacted. And for the cost, I will address that as well. We have been currently switching out several of our leaf blowers, and these costs were mainly from what it's been costing us out of pocket to do this. The leaf blower itself, it depends on what type of grade, you know, if you want a high-level, commercial grade, and which, here in the city, I'm assuming we want to keep that level standard service. It's going to cost a little more. But the true cost, it's really expensive, is buying the chargers for the batteries. One of those alone is over $1,100 for like a basic model. And then each leaf blower, you have to have at least two batteries on hand, because they do die so quickly. And if you don't, then that delays the jobs and things. So the costs are so high, that one-time transition costs because of the things you need to buy in order just to run them upfront.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? That's it. Okay. Any questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Rosati?
Curious, out of the inventory that we have on these items, how long would they last before we would be transitioning to electric? Is it three years? Is it five years? Is it seven years?
I believe we have an estimate of, Ms. Garcia is coming to address.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Tagahashi and council members, Marissa Garcia with Parks and Recreation Department. In terms of landscape only, our internal crew, we are currently at 50, we've converted 55% of our gas blowers to electric battery-operated. We have some on order, so in the next month or two, we'll be at 85%. And internally, our goal, we just set a goal for ourselves, to convert our blowers, gas leaf blowers by January 1 of 2026, which is well ahead of what we had identified in the greenhouse gas reduction plan. And that, again, is only our landscape team. We do have some, some other electric blowers in other areas, as well as we have some operators and contractors that I don't know, have not had conversations with, like our, you know, team at DeBel. I know Mr. Berkman in Public Works oversees a parkwood contract, and they maintain some of our city facilities. So having those conversations in terms of city, whether it's city staff or contractors, we haven't had those, I have not personally had those conversations about what the transition.
But we're getting there.
Absolutely.
And we're getting there pretty fast. It's not like 10 years. It's, we're getting there quick.
No, no, no. Absolutely. What's, you know, we know that this has been coming. This has just been part of our industry standard. So we have been very proactive in that regard. Where we need to spend a little bit more time is on the charging infrastructure. So having the charging banks and having to properly and adequately charge these batteries is having a climate control area, which will be part of our City Art Services project, which is still a number of years out. But in terms... But in terms of knowing that, you know, this is a, our social responsibility in terms of, you know, cleaning the air and making sure that we are following best practices.
And then, are there other questions related to the battery itself? The storage of the battery, getting rid of the battery at the end of life? Transportation of the battery when it's in a vehicle, left in the sun? Do we have protocols? Have we thought about that?
I don't have the specific details. I don't know if Mr. Del Campo can address those. I do appreciate Ms. Pika talking about the batteries. We, internally, we have three batteries per each equipment because of just the usage in our park facility. So I'll have Mr. Del Campo address the other question.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Mike Del Campo, Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. You guys are probably sick of seeing me, so make this quick. Yes, we have, we have a protocol. It's not, it's not a written SOPP. So our batteries and our equipment is kept inside the cab when the guys aren't in there. So it's semi-climate controlled, when I mean, when they're driving out there, so not in the back, but then they're kept in the back when they're in the parks, and they try to park in the shade. That's all, that's all we can do right now for the extra batteries. And we have found that they don't get overheated that way, and it's safer that the batteries are in the back instead of in the cab that can get the extra, extra heat when they're parked. So yes, we have some standards, and they bring those equipment in at night, and they put them in our, our shed that's not climate controlled, but it's a lot cooler than the outside. So we do have some safety protocols that, that haven't been written yet, because we don't, we don't know. This is all trial and error.
Yeah, and that's kind of a concern of mine. And then, do the batteries get repurposed, or do they go in a landfill? Where do they go?
Don't know yet. That's, that's a, that's a question that we were asking, what do they go to? So we haven't had one die on us yet. I don't know where the cell phones go. So I turn it in when I get a new one, so, but we haven't even had that yet. So I'm going to, when we first get our battery, we'll go to where we buy them, right down here by Water and Power, and see if they'll recycle them. So that's going to be a, a whole new learning curve on where that's going to happen.
Got it. Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, you good?
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to ask a question on the same line of battery. Taking it over from your, I might need you back. Well, given that Pasadena and Glendale and South Pasadena have already implemented the program, would it be, this would be part of the outreach to find out from them, I mean, learn from what they did and find out from them what they, where the battery, you know, all the batteries go?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think it's something we can learn.
And they've also implemented that one 2024, correct? I think that's what you said? Yeah. So they've only had their batteries for a year. Batteries probably, like, I had, I had a, I call it a, you know, home maker blower for my house that I used, not a commercial grade like we use here, and it's lasted me two years. It's just a little tiny one. The ones we're using are backpack size. So they've been solid. They haven't been, the one, our first ones are still working as strong as the, as when we first got them. I think there's like, maybe they have, the team has said maybe like 5, 10 minutes decreased in batteries during, but they're keeping up. So we don't know how long they're going to last, or, you know, so, but yes, we'll definitely talk to Glendale and Pasadena. I mean, we know them, we work with them, so.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I, I believe also, from my conversation with my own gardener, that the battery is the major concern that they have over storing it in the truck and being able to sustain their jobs without having to constantly run back to the truck to get charged, or get the other battery to go back and do the work. So I think we obviously have some work to do, and, and we may be able to learn from other cities. I know it looks like South Pasadena implemented this in 2022. Maybe some of their mistakes or success, we can learn from that.
Absolutely.
And I believe during our public outreach or education, this will be very important, because we definitely, it is new, and nobody really knows exactly how to handle it until they start getting those equipments in their hands.
Right, and we do know that we do need to get our trucks upgraded, and that's part of the increased cost to have those areas climate controlled and charging the battery. So it's a, so each of our trucks are going to have to have that, too. Right now, it's pretty Wild West. We're just trying to figure out and make it, and see how they work, find them out. We are working with ANGA to get some different brands. We tried a bunch of different tools with them, and we have found that one brand for us is the best, lasts the longest, has the most power. So, but yeah, we work with them as well, and we're, we're members of their, of their organization, so, the Greenhouse Alliance. So, yeah, we're, they bought, they bought in a whole trailer with multiple different brands. It was pretty cool. We got to, you've got to use them, beat them up for like three months, and the guys loved it. So, and then turn them back all dirty and say, here you go. Thank you. It was great. So, yeah, we're doing what we can.
And thank you for that. And I also want to address the issue over the cost, because if you just Google what is the cost, it might be something for me to use at home, something easy, $400, $500, and that's a little misleading, because, you know, I also checked different sites for commercial use, and they can go all the way up to $5,700. Because of the power of the battery, because of being able to keep it for so many hours, and, you know, so the, I, we're not making decision based on, well, it could be $500, so it's not going to cost us as much. We need to buy equipment, I believe, that is going to be lasting us, you know, more than two years, hopefully. So we, we're not constantly having to upgrade those equipments and change it.
Yeah, our equipment, like I said, our, our original equipment's been lasting us, so it's been, it's been good. And we buy it right here in town from a local distributor, and we have the invoices that shows, you know, the, the, the actual blower is $595, each battery is $1,104, the charger's 100, the charger that charges that battery is 126. Then you have to buy, you don't have to, but we buy the smaller battery, because sometimes it's better to have that small battery on for a quick job instead of putting the whole backpack on. So we're, so the guys and the team doesn't, don't get hurt by using too big of a tool for a small place. So there's all these, that's all the options. That's why the cost of, for what we're paying is what we're paying for. We have the invoices for it.
And they are, you plug them in, so they, they will use power. So there's going to be some cost. I know it's probably not drastic, but with all the equipments you will be having, there is going to be costs to the power versus gas. It might be, well, with electric rates, I don't know what we're paying and what other individuals will be paying, but there is a cost associated with that.
Absolutely.
Those were my questions right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, thank you. I'm okay. I, I wanted to look at some of this stuff on the report from other cities. Beverly Hills did a ban like 50 years ago, but based on noise. And I don't know if you've been to Beverly Hills back in the 70s, but it's like residential as far as the eye can see in those big palatial estates. I don't think anybody working in the office buildings was asking for the ban. And that leads me to the next line on that item. 30 years ago, LA banned them, but only in residential neighborhoods. And I'll be honest with you, when I get complaints from people, when they call me or email me or bump into me at Costco and pull me into the freezer and yell at me for five minutes, it's because they were woken up in the morning because of leaf blowers. They're not sitting in their office complaining about that noise. Was there any thought put into having a bifurcated system where we do residential ban early and then roll out larger commercial properties? Because I'll be honest with you, when I look at the average lawn in Burbank, use a rake, use a broom. But if I go to one of these big corporate parks, that's a huge amount of landscaping. So for us to force that organization to change quickly, that seems like a big hurdle. But if we're, if we're doing our parks by January 1st, I mean, is there an option where we do residential earlier and then roll out the enforcement later to other bigger properties?
I don't think LA's rolled out their enforcement since 1998.
Oh, sure.
Because I see gas-powered yard equipment in residential neighborhoods in Los Angeles today.
Yeah, I have seen that, too.
So I'm, I'm happy to, to just briefly share, there is a code, right, in the Burbank Municipal Code, not to use blowers before 8:00 AM in, you know, within X number of feet of homes and, and schools in particular. All of our parks, we use that 8:00 AM. So we do not use leaf blowers, whether the park is within that distance of a school or a residential home. My assumption is, I, I don't, well, I don't know private gardeners, but I can tell you that from city, we do not use leaf blowers before 8:00 AM.
Well, I mean, I, and yes, I know that rule exists, but I have senior citizens who call me, who sleep until 9:00, 10:00, right? Families with young kids who are not in school schedule, you know, we're talking two, three, four years old, they're sleeping past 8:00. Is it, is it feasible for us to look at a bifurcated system? Is it even doable to say, okay, we're only going to look at residential ban, 500 feet or whatever, in residential neighborhoods, and then ignore everything else, at least for a year or two, and reassess?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the question. If directed to do so, we can definitely look into implementing it in that way. We could do a phased rollout, start with residential, move on to bigger properties, or start with city property, like residential than city properties, however the council wishes and directs. We could, we definitely can take that direction and move forward.
And the only reason I mention it is because it seems like it's more targeted enforcement. It's less for us to look at and, and implement. You know, most residences get our, our BWP letters in the mail, and so they're, they'll be more informed than, say, a big corporate office park who, you know, farms out there, worked with a third-party contractor. Like, for us to get eyes on this ordinance, I think it's easier for us, it would be easier to target residences. That's why I'm bringing up.
If I may, just provide additional information from a parking rec perspective. If we have parks that are adjacent or within that, that radius of, of homes, it would certainly impact our ability to properly maintain our parks within the operating hours without, I can tell you, changing work hours of our, of our team would not be something that we would want to look at. Additionally, well, again, not speaking directly, just what I know about, what I've seen, I've talked to my team, sometimes these leaf, electric leaf blowers were still powerful. We have commercial grade. I don't know what gardeners would be using if they have same commercial grade. But their work day or the time that it takes to maintain a home or do the gardening of a home might be extended a little bit more. So I think while balancing the, the impacts to private gardeners, there should be some consideration of if the hours, you know, they can't start until 9 o'clock, then you're already, there's already the potential of impacting their ability. So I would just caution council to be really thoughtful in, in changing the hours and allowing that.
I, I hear that. I don't think the hour, so I'm going off of this January 1st idea that, and I'm saying not, not that it is going to happen, but if we can get all of our parks' equipment over to electric by the first of the year, that to me seems like an easy targeted goal to also do the soft rollout, where we target January 1st for residential and say, hey, starting January 1st, we're looking at a ban, we're going to have a six-month education period, we're not doing any, you know, fines or anything like that, but if we see somebody out there, we'll send out some enforcement and talk to the owner, talk to the equipment manager, whatever. And that way, it's a slow rollout in residential, and then we come back a year later and we look at the commercial property. Like, that's kind of where I'm going with this, where we, because if we can do it in the parks, and, you know, one of the speakers came up earlier today and said, hey, the city needs to do it first. I, I think if we, if we have that goal, if we have that target and, and we're successful by January 1st, I think we can also do it in residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, and with that, I will just mention, right, I'm all supportive of this. I think city, we're already, we're already going to meet that goal in January. We started this phasing out in 2022. So it's taken us, so I just want to mention that it hasn't been overnight. While we're well ahead and we're going to be at 100% by January 1st of 2026, again, which is our goal, we started phasing this out in 2022 by testing out and piloting different equipment. So I think there's, you know, we need to be thoughtful as to the private industry to give them sufficient time for them to phase this. Again, the education is fantastic.
No, I, I hear what you're saying.
Councilmember Rosati, you have a follow-up?
I just want to be mindful that we're not just taking good equipment and just tossing it. It's taxpayer money, right? They purchased it, and we should use it at its useful life. So I just don't want to be filling landfills with perfectly good equipment that the taxpayer has purchased. So in a perfect world, I'd like to see only rakes, but we all know that's not cost-effective. It costs an arm and a leg if you, major gardener, just rake everything. That would be my preference, but that's not reality. But I do want to be mindful of the cost and the taxpayer expense, and, and, again, you're taking very good equipment and just tossing it. So anyways.
Can I ask a quick, just follow-up to what he's talking about? If Parks and Rec were to completely switch everything over to electric, if you had a handful of gas-powered that were still operational, are you able to give those to other departments that are still operating with gas power? Because I appreciate us going to full electric in the parks, but like you said, there are other departments that can use this equipment that isn't, you know, near residences or, with kids playing in the grass kind of thing. Like, is that doable?
It, conceivably, yes. I will, I'm very appreciative of Councilmember Rosati's comment, because that's obviously a priority of ours right now, being responsible to our taxpayer dollars. Again, because we started this almost four years ago, we have been replacing as we go along, which is why I say that January 1st is our goal to get it done. So we would have three, we, we just ordered, so we have six that are, we're waiting to receive, and then that would leave three. And based on the current condition, the use, usage that we, you know, we're in the parks every single day, that's when we're hoping to, to replace those. But absolutely, you know, working with different, I don't know of another department internally that has, I don't know if Mr. Berkman's team has, has blowers, but it's, it's Park and Rec primarily, and I think we use a third-party service provider to do some of our other facilities, which we would not be, you know, giving them our equipment.
Yeah. Councilmember Mullins?
Here we go. So I am not in agreement of going for force in, in starting a residential, our private business owners, such as our gardeners, to be cut off immediately and start on January 1st for, for multiple reasons. I think we're all very environmentally cautious. I know we want to do the best. We want better air quality for, for our community, for ourself, for our children. We also, you know, are home on Saturdays, and we hear the noise and, and the blowers and, and the lawnmowers going on in the morning. So, yeah, we've all been, you know, woken up by a gardener or a homeowner taking care of their yard. I think in order for us to do it right, and this is what I've seen from the other cities, is you got to do it through education and allow the process to take its place where we start having the, the program implemented that would affect everyone in the city. To avoid having some private gardeners or homeowners saying, wait a minute, how come they get to do it? Or why, you know, start reporting each other, because there's going to be confusion. Do we have a policy? Oh, it's only applying to these people, it doesn't apply to you. So as we have done with the plastic ordinance, which was very successful, and we had a lot of debates up here, and whether we should do it now or later, education is very important. And from my understanding in this, this conversation we had at the previous meeting when this was first introduced to us, that equipments are not, the replacement of some equipments are not available. If you have a gas blower, if you have a gas lawnmower, you cannot replace a part, because they're not available, and which drives them to purchase an electric blower, electric lawnmower. And I think as we will see over the next six months, once we work on this, you know, adopt something for, for staff to move forward, that the word is going to get out, and then they, it's going to it's going to be known the city of Burbank is working on this, and now we're implementing a robust community outreach program, learning from the other cities. I want to know what they do with their batteries. I want to know how do they store them on the truck? I want to know a lot of the questions that were being asked now, but we don't have any answers, and our staff, they don't have any answers, which is fine, because this is new, and we're all experimenting with this. So in my opinion, I think we're going to have some loss of jobs, and I think Ms. Cuschenbaum said it earlier, our gardeners are really struggling and suffering, and they don't make as much money as, you know, they should be making, but, you know, I don't want to put a burden on them to add more additional costs on them, that they have to now drop everything, get rid of all their equipment, even if it's good, even if it's not broken, and they have to purchase new equipment because we're going to be out there enforcing it. And I heard from staff, from the report, we don't have the mechanism to go out and enforce yet. So I can see people calling in in the morning, and everybody knows I walk a lot, and walking on the street, there's a lot of gardeners out there. And so I can imagine the chaos that this would cause them to start just switching suddenly for the next six months or however many months we have in this year to start implementing January 2026. So as much as we want to clean the environment, as much as I think this is good for all of us, I think we need to do this wisely, and we don't need to add any additional financial burden and be equitable in our transition, so everyone has the same experience and provide the education, have the city take the lead as we have done so. And I appreciate you doing this, because last time we talked about it, you guys hadn't bought anything yet, or you were looking into it. So the fact that you have 55 pieces of equipment, that is a progress. So I think we're on the right path. I am really, and I know we're not debating or giving our answers, but my concerns over what you said, Councilmember Anthony, I really want to be equitable through the transition. I want to make sure our gardeners are not suffering, our homeowners that cannot afford buying a new lawnmower now because they don't have a job, suffer through us going out and doing enforcement, or having a neighbor to call, and we don't have the staff to sustain these calls for right now. So educate, go out, implement, then we start enforcing. Thank you.
Point of order, Vice Mayor. We are kind of deliberating, we haven't even closed the public hearing.
It's not a hearing, but, yeah, questions, yeah.
We haven't.
Correct. And I was just going to say I have some thoughts, and I think we all do, on what you just said, but I actually have a few questions, if it's okay to, go ahead. All right, so, yeah, thank you for the questions, great questions. And to me, staff, it seems to me that what you're saying, because city, the cities, we're going to be transferring to electric by 2026. So this is really about how to transition the private, small businesses and the contractors that work with the city, right? How to do that, whether to let that happen organically, or whether we have a plan to kind of give them a little bit of a push to transition faster. So there's a few cities on this list that have recently enacted a ban, Glendale, South Pasadena, a couple others, yeah, that are like a couple years ahead of us, and I'm just curious, how are they doing on that? Are they getting a pretty good conversion rate? Do we know, have any idea, like, what, how well it's working, if they're able to do this kind of slow phase-out like this? The option to possible slow phase-out?
Thank you for your question. So those three cities, South Pasadena, Glendale, and Pasadena, they all did a phase-out program. And it started with outreach, education, and then enacting the ban, and then a year after that, actually enforcing the ban. So it gave time to continue education and allow for transition and to provide the resources. I'm blanking which city did this, one city set up like a phone line to help take calls, give information, even take complaints. Case loads have doubled in these cities for co-enforcement, so it's also something to keep in mind. So a slow phase approach would be best, so we can roll out the best process to do this as least effective.
Okay, great. Because my guess is, especially with the small gardeners that do residential, is that we share a lot of the same businesses with those cities, right? So if we, whether we do, whatever we choose today, I think it would be valuable to partner with those cities best we can, to work as a team, to help that transition. And how many contractors do we have now, working with the city, that would need, if we were to enact something today, would need to, would be applicable for the transition?
Off the top of my head, I can think of three, but I've not, you know, I don't know, potentially four or five, not having a conversation with Burbank Water and Power. But internally, we have our golf course, we have our tree trimming company, and I know managed through Public Works is our landscape, citywide landscape, you know, contractor.
Yeah. Because I'd be curious what stage they're at now. Do you know, happen to know what stage they're at now?
I do not know. I know DeBel, they have, or we, they have some on order. So DeBel's a little bit different, I think, in terms of the impact. The impact would be burdened directly by the city, because we, the city pays for all of these things, but in terms of like a park would, for example, that would require a contract, negotiations and a contract amendment. So, again, I don't know that we've had any specific conversations with them to know what that looks like.
Okay. And if we were to do a longer rollout, like two years, for example, that contract, then negotiation, wouldn't really need to happen, though, until the end of the two years, when the actual application of the ban would be in order, right? It wouldn't be immediate that we'd need to re-contract, it would be when the actual ban is in place, after all the education and stuff?
I think it would be important to have those discussions early with them, and they might just internally want to just replace them, because as was mentioned in the staff report, you can't purchase any equipment in California effective January of '24. So they may already be phasing out a lot of their equipment, but again, not knowing.
Yeah. Because I'm wondering that it may, in the course of our, you know, if we were to phase it out over two years, the course of our education and, you know, kind of talking to everybody, it may just already organically be converting over for the contractor, specifically for the city. So unless we do an immediate ban, it sounds like it's not going to have too much of an impact, maybe a little bit, but not a huge impact right away on those contractors. Am I understanding that?
Correct.
Okay. It was, one of you mentioned that we received 21 complaints about leaf blowers. Do we know if those complaints were like noise complaints, that like because they were too early, were they because they just didn't like leaf blowers and wanted them to be gone? I mean, do we have an idea of what kind of complaints it were?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm Andreas, and he said I was the code compliance manager. For the past three years, we've had, on average, about 21 complaints a year. Mainly, it is noise, then I would say it's probably duration and the time that they start. When we do get a complaint, we try to make contact, go out, contact with the gardener themselves, educate them, provide them with the requirements and limitations, and if it is a noise issue, we will take sound measurements. It's very rare that we have found that they do go over the allowed decibels.
And follow-up on that, when you are called out to speak to the gardeners, how does that usually go? Are they pretty receptive? Do, is the conversation pretty positive overall?
They often seem hesitant to talk and provide information, which naturally, especially with the climate right now, we understand that. So we also do make contact with the property owner, we usually give them a courtesy call, because ultimately, if there is a violation, it's not corrected, the property owner would be responsible for it.
Okay. Yeah, that's definitely a concern right now, that even with education, even if that, you know, whatever we choose moving forward, it's to be cognizant of what that is like for them to be approached with code enforcement, right? Let's see. And if we were to implement a two-year rollout, would the education and the responses to the calls be a similar process to what you just described, with more additional information and just with the rebates and all the other information about converting to electric?
Yes, it would be. We're reactive, so we go out when somebody has notified us of a concern, so we would take that opportunity to provide education, further education.
Great, okay. So it'd be kind of piggybacking on what we already do and shifting what we say a little bit to be more about the converting over?
We could actually even hand them information, something to take with them, that they can review and be aware and remember what's required at that point.
Okay. I think it might be useful to, again, partnering with the other cities, to let them know, too, that the other cities have the same requirements, so it might be a good idea for them, so they can work in all the cities, okay? And then the last question I have, if we did decide today to take, you can see where I'm kind of leaning on this, but I'm still being open-minded, to take a two-year approach, could we take a two-year approach, but also after a year, come back and look to see how it's going, what the conversion rate is, what's the new landscape for purchasing and batteries? What's the landscape, no pun intended, what's the landscape for, for just kind of approaching gardeners and how they feel about that? And could we just kind of do an assessment, and then at that point, decide whether that two-year is still good, maybe we want to extend it, maybe we could do it faster? Would that be something we could do?
Yes, absolutely. We could definitely come back, give an update, and let you know how it's been going, what kind of reactions we're getting to the process, if we need more time to provide resources. We could definitely do that, if council wishes.
Okay, great, awesome. So those are all my questions. Any more questions? Yes, Councilmember Rosati.
Comment, not really a question. I just wanted to remind everyone, not too long ago, when we had the fires, there was a ban, a temporary ban on leaf blowers, and all of our phones and emails blew up with people saying, stop! And we had no way of enforcing it, no way to penalize the people that were using the leaf blowers during the ban. So I think, again, it's going to be a hard thing to get our arms around. And the second thing I wanted to make comment about was, the other cities started their ban prior to knowing that you weren't going to be able to purchase this equipment in 2024 and beyond. So I think that if they would have known that, they may have taken a different approach. Knowing that you can't purchase the equipment anymore, you know, from attrition, you're going to lose the ability to keep buying this equipment. So I think they did it prior to knowing that you couldn't purchase the equipment, so I think they would have chose a different course of action if they would have known what the ban would be in 2024.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Anthony.
We talked a lot about commercial leaf blowers. If I don't have a gardener or a professional team that does my lawn, and I have just a tiny little personal leaf blower, and I use it not every weekend, I'm not going to go out and do my lawn every weekend, but like maybe once a month, 10, 15 minutes, small little two-stroke engine, I keep it in good shape, I clean it, I make sure it's fine. How long can something like that last? We're talking five years, talking 10 years? 20 years? Okay.
Decades.
Okay. Easily a decade minimum, right. I think we're talking about two different things here tonight. How do we get compliance with what, I'll be honest, the vast majority of emails we've got on this subject say, yes, please ban them, any way, shape, or form. And how do we balance that with the only, the only folks who've reached out, even here at Public Comment, that had anything negative to say, weren't that they didn't want a ban? It was simply, how do we implement it with what Councilmember Mullins was saying, outreach, education, and enforcement way down the line? So what's that balance? For me, I guess, if it's all right, I mean, I know we're sort of leaning towards deliberation. The one thing I just wanted to point out before, as we get into the deliberation, is we can watch attrition happen, and to my earlier point, ignore the large commercial properties and any of the really commercial landscapers, and in a year or two, they'll be gone anyways. Because you just, you can't buy the new equipment anymore, and these people are using their equipment every day, weekly. It'll break down, and they'll be done. My concern is the individual who's got one in his yard, who is not paying attention, doesn't follow city council agenda, doesn't know anything about carb or sores or any of that, and just pulls out his blower at 7:00 AM on a Saturday because he wants to do his lawn, and wakes up like 12 people in the neighborhood, and it's like, okay, now we're going to send out the police and arrest this guy? Like, how do we, how do we balance it with saying, hey, look, can you not use your, here's a rebate, we'll get you an electric one, let's talk to these people and make that move? And so for me, I think that's where this conversation is. How do we get folks to understand that this is, A, a noise issue, first and foremost? I think every single one of these cities talks about it being a noise issue. And then, B, it's just better for the environment, and it is where the industry is moving. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Rosati. We're, I think we're in deliberation now. No more questions, right?
I just want to say.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
May I? Just, Ken Berkman, Public Works Director, I'd be remiss if I did not clarify something very important. No batteries are to go in the landfill. So let's be clear on that, and if anybody has any questions, go to our recycle center website or call 818-238-3900. No batteries in our landfill, please. Thank you.
I was just going to point out, just, and let's be real, you know, the, we have gotten some emails regarding this, but from an equitable standpoint, the people that use this equipment every day have no idea we're talking about this. I mean, they have no idea. So, I mean, yeah, we got some homeowners that are annoyed by the noise, but the men and women that use this equipment every day, they're not watching city council meetings, they're not following our agendas, and they have no idea this is happening. So I just wanted to point that out.
I want to add to that point, the only reason they would know when they try to go replace a part or purchase a new equipment, they say, sorry, you can't do it, and then that's when they discover, oh, the law has changed and we can't find these parts any longer. So they don't have to watch us to know, but they can't purchase these equipments anymore.
Councilmember Anthony?
And, you know, to that point, that's why I think I, I would, you know, I'm interested in looking at a ban, I would like to just ignore all commercial property. Because I know for a fact those, they don't, you know, the CEO of Disney isn't out there blowing with his personal blower, right? These are professional teams, they're going to be done with their, you know, sores, their two-stroke engine, those are going to be gone in a year. They won't be able to replace them. They'll do it by hand at some point. Yeah, they'll do clippers and rakes and all that. So for me, if we do a ban, I would like it to just be residential and just outreach. That's it. Start with outreach.
Yeah.
And not even come back with enforcement.
But listen to what you're saying, right? The big corporations are the ones that can afford to replace this stuff.
But they're already doing it.
That's what I'm saying. And you're banning it on the little guy who really affects the most.
And what I'm saying is, if it's a ban, don't start with enforcement. Just, we go, it's a quality of life issue to the people in the residential neighborhoods.
If I may, yeah. If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'd like to just throw a couple things in here for discussion, too. So I think that it's important to understand that this is just a piece of the puzzle. And I think you're all bringing up really important points about how the state has already made their law, and so if someone goes to buy new equipment, it isn't even there, the gas power isn't even there to buy anymore. So we aren't single-handedly changing everything. We're, this is a piece of the puzzle, one way or the other, whether we allow attrition on its own and just stand back and let everything naturally happen, or if we make some sort of proactive move. So I think that even if, I mean, I don't think anyone here, on the four of us, wants to do a ban today. I think that's pretty clear. I think that's pretty clear. So we aren't talking about that. What we're talking about is basically whether to kind of just let things go on their own without our participation in this puzzle, or if we have a participation in this puzzle and how much do we have, right? So I think it's, you know, it's taken the city four years of work to get to this point now, and you have one more year left. So it'll be a total of five years, basically, to do the transition in parks, right? While the other entities in the city are not as big as the city itself, the city facilities themselves, it's going to take a while for everyone to transition. Whether we help or not, it's going to take a while. But if we let natural attrition happen without our participation, what we're doing is we're allowing everything else around us to take care of this. We're allowing it to the state, Glendale, Pasadena, South Pasadena, everybody else to address this, and we're sitting and benefiting from that while everybody else takes care of it. So I think that whether, you know, whatever we decide to do tonight, that I think it'd be best to decide to do something, but to keep in mind all the points that you've made, that if we do it to be very cognizant and do it in a way that it's not going to hurt our small businesses. To your point about the residential, if we were to do a longer stretch of a ban, I don't like the word "ban" at this point, it's fine to put it in there, but it sounds like we're doing it tomorrow. It's more like a rollout of transition, a rollout of converting to electric. And then at some point later, we're going to have a deadline. This is the deadline for when we convert, right? So that process, if there were to be any, you know, that deadline to apply it to residence or commercial by then, I mean, it may be a completely different world. So I think at this point, deciding like the minutia might not be as effective as more just kind of figuring out how long do we want it to take, and what our part is, and how much kind of deadline we want to put on it. If we don't put a deadline at all, and I just know this, working with a lot of, you know, with my kids and with just people in general in various working areas, is that if you don't have a deadline, it will never fully get completed. So you need some kind of deadline, right? But we want to make a deadline that's fair, gives plenty of time, and allows us to get there. And so I think that if, as we're, you know, kind of moving on this process, if we have the deadline, it gives staff the ability to say, "Hey, in two years, we're going to have this deadline. Here's some information." If we don't have a deadline, and we ask staff to do education or other things, there won't be as much emphasis or much leverage to be able to have these conversations. So I think there's value in having the deadline. Personally, I think it's about how long out, and I think within that, let the staff do the framework and figure out like from there. And then one more thing, I do think that partnering with the sister cities is really important, and having our deadline in a way that is maybe not the same as theirs, but a kind of co-inciting, so that we're working all together to help all these folks transition together, and not us doing something different than they are in such a way that, you know, we're either too fast or too slow, and so we're all transitioning at the same time. So just some thoughts to put in there as we're talking about kind of this process. Yes, Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you. Can I have staff bring Slide 9 in the PowerPoint presentation? Can we bring that up? I think that would keep us focused on some, you know, something very similar to what you said, Vice Mayor. And I think staff has already provided us with directions. And to me, we've been there before, I keep on saying the plastics ordinance, because we had lots of conversations regarding that, and it worked at the end. So if we look at Slide 9, and I know, okay. So what is staff is recommending, two-year phased-out approach, right? So we are going to provide a deadline, we are going to provide direction. Year one, walking away is education. And I like everything they put, we can even throw some more things. We have social media on there, we have, you know, the normal, what we do, flyers at public counters, permits, everything we have information. Year two, that's when it starts being affected. By then, I believe, most of the equipments, they're not going to be able to find it because the law says you have to buy the new equipment. If we follow this option to guidelines, I think it's going to give us all what we're looking for, and I would appreciate the thought that we do it citywide, because it does make sense. You can't have the, you know, the big guys with lots of money, we're saying, "We're going to give you more time," and, you know. And I know this is not what you're looking for, because eventually they have to replace it. But I think, in my opinion, I want to treat everyone in this policy equal in the sense of, we're banning it, we're banning citywide, including our own departments. They have taken the lead, they've done a good job, but effective the second year, you know, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, whoever is using that will be banned. Then it gives the staff opportunities to be able to handle the code compliance and handle the calls and handle the complaints, because we will be getting complaints. And, you know, even if we ban it in two years, somebody's going to call and complain. So hopefully, that allows the city staff, it allows us, it allows education, and we are going to take action. The action is, yeah, we're going to ban it effective the second year, but we're giving you that time to get your affairs together and purchase the new equipment, and eventually we'll ban it. So I think, I think, I mean, you know, I appreciate staff coming back with us, that's why I said the report is very well-written, because it does give us the option that we always look for. You know, how do we educate? How do we tell people? How we do all these things? So I think we need to focus on this slide. Thank you.
Can I?
It was next, yeah. Did you have a?
I'm fine with the two-year phased approach. Here's my question to staff. Year one, is there any reason why we can't start year one, January 1st? And we start then, and that way we've got this countdown, and people know, January 1st, 2026, we start the education and the outreach, and we can focus on residential neighborhoods first, which I would appreciate, and then year two, January 1st, 2027?
Yeah, if I could answer that. So if you decide to actually implement the two-phase approach, we have to still come back with the ordinance. So we could time it where it starts roughly, so it goes into effect, the ordinance goes into effect right around that January 1 time.
Okay.
And that allows us to kind of have a nice, clean date as far as the two-year phase.
Yeah, because it's July, almost August now. Yeah, is that enough time to come back? That's what I like. And a focus, we start the information in residential neighborhoods, that's where we hit hard first, and then obviously everywhere.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
So I like it. So I was in favor, what I was going to say was more, a little bit more time, only because the more time, the more replacement and less enforcement.
Yep.
And I'm concerned that if we do it too soon, we're going to be driving our staff crazy trying to enforce this thing.
I totally hear you.
So I think the more time, I was going to suggest a third year, but if you want to do it sooner than late, and give them two and a half years?
By 2027, most of these guys are going to be-
I agree.
And the enforcement, that's what staff is saying, won't start until the end of the year two. So, and it's, we're all saying the same thing, basically what they presented to us. So instead of getting the calls, having staff ringing around, they don't have enough staff, by then, everyone should have the new equipment, because they're not going to be able to replace. And also, the education program has already been implemented, and hopefully, we're moving on to the complete banning of the equipment.
Yeah. And if I can, maybe we can split the baby a bit on this with the residential, commercial, is to, at this time, do, like, have the citywide education, so that it's easier for staff to just kind of do it generally. And at the one-year mark, when they come back for the report back, you can let us know, staff, whether, oh god, you know, residential really needs more time, or commercial needs more time, or whatever. And then at that point, we can adjust to say, okay, it looks like really, you know, commercial's ready to go, or residential's ready to go, whichever one, and then the other one just needs more time. And at that point-
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay, great. And then, and I just, if we decide, okay, so the year two plan, if we decide to do that, when would the, we would come back, what, the beginning of 20, hold on, beginning of 27 with an update? Okay. And at that point, if we wanted to, we could expand it, we could extend it, or we could shorten it, or whatever. If it looks like it's already 80% there, 90% there, say, "Let's just do it," or if it's like still needs some time. And then, of course, as we are starting, you know, if we start in January of 2026, we don't know where we're going to be at that point, and we can, going to have another conversation when we have this come back. But just to be, you know, respectful and cognizant of the stress that the small businesses are having right now when we approach them for enforcement and education, so that's important. Okay.
Would it be better to come back like November 2026, November, December, end of the year?
We would be coming back before anything got implemented as far as enforcement.
Right. Good, okay, perfect. Before anything shifts.
Prior to January 1st of 2027.
Okay.
Perfect, great. Excellent.
And when are we going to talk about enforcement? Like, is it the homeowner that's going to jail, or is it the gardener?
Going to jail. Well, we have, I'm very, I'm very, one of the things I love about Burbank and the way that we do quote-unquote enforcement, is that we are very education and support forward with enforcement of most of these kinds of things. With the plastics ordinance, it's that way.
Yeah, it ramps up.
I kind of liken this to the wood shake roof ordinance 25 years ago. You couldn't get a permit to roof over a wood shake, so it was just by attrition. And I think, what are we at, like 100 wood shake roofs now, over 20 or 7? But we never, we never put leans on people's property, we didn't ticket them, little ladies who had, were living by the, so I kind of liken it to that. I mean, we're just going to just keep reminding people, keep reminding people, but not, I don't want to see somebody get ticketed, that's all.
Well, my only concern is, two years from now, three years from now, five years from now, the one guy in the flats who's been taking care of his machine for 10, 20 years, he's out every couple of weeks, waking up the neighbor, like, at that point, if it's a repeat offender, that's my issue.
Right. And I think we have something similar for the plastics ordinance, I think, so we could maybe look at something like that.
These electric ones are just as noisy as the gas.
Okay, I think we're getting close to a-
I can debate that five-decibel difference, I can debate.
Is anyone ready to try to put together a motion that might pass?
Councilmember Mullins, go ahead.
You got it?
Oh, she's chewing.
That's why I said that.
Well, thank you. Our friend. Okay. I make a motion, let's see, we want, we want option two, correct? Okay. I make a motion to direct staff to develop and introduce a draft ordinance banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers, utilizing option number two as presented in the staff report.
With an effective date roughly January 1, 2026, and a status update a year, a little before a year.
End of 2026.
Correct.
Okay. I will second, because that was my item. Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
Yes.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Great job, everybody. Thank you to staff for answering all our questions and tolerating our round and round about that.
Before the next people come up, so they've done sleep studies, and that five-decibel difference between electric and gas is the difference of waking somebody up and being asleep through it.
Yeah, okay, that's a post-meeting discussion. All right, so, let's see, the second report to council tonight is the introduction of an ordinance amending and restating Title II, Section 1, Article 4, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, and approval of various administrative changes to Boards, Commissions, and Committees. I welcome Madam City Clerk, Kimberly Clark, to please present the report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tagahashi, members of the City Council, Kimberly Clark, City Clerk. Tonight, as stated, I will be presenting item number nine. Previously, Councilmember Mullins requested a report on the composition of the city's BCCs, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, and the attendance policy for the city's BCCs. On February 4th, 2025, council provided direction to staff regarding the following. The desire to establish a consistent member composition of five to seven members for all city-initiated BCCs, except for the Sustainable Burbank Commission and the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission, which will remain at nine members, and the youth board, which I will discuss later in this report. The Community Development Goals Committee, which currently has nine members, would be reduced to seven members. City staff has recommended implementing a reduction in membership to the following BCCs from seven to five. Board of Library Trustees, Burbank Water and Power Board, Infrastructure Oversight Board, Police Commission, Senior Citizen Board, and the Transportation Commission. Staff requests council confirmation of this change. To clarify, no members would be removed. Rather, this reduction will occur through expiration of current members' terms until the member composition of the BCC reaches the number authorized by council. Unscheduled vacancies will not be filled unless an appointment is needed to meet the membership threshold desired by council for that specific BCC. Council eliminated the requirement to include voting representatives from the Planning Commission and Park Recreation and Community Services Board on the Art in Public Places Committee. This will reduce the number of members in the Art in Public Places Committee from seven to five, although representatives from these other BCCs would be encouraged to attend Art in Public Places Committee meetings on an as-needed basis. Council also voted to simplify the attendance policy, to authorize additional reasons for member removal, to remove the requirement that BCC members be registered voters, to establish a term limit for BCC members of three consecutive full terms, or a maximum of 12 years in total time served on a single BCC. The term limit would be applied to full-term appointments beginning August 1, 2026, or another date as selected by council. Staff requests guidance from council on this matter. Appointments to serve unexpired terms and terms served prior to the adoption of this change would not be counted toward the total number of terms or years served. This ordinance goes into effect 30 days from adoption, which is anticipated to be mid-September Staff requests guidance as to whether council wishes to have the changes to term limits apply only to the city-initiated BCCs, or if they should extend also to the council-appointed representatives who serve on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority, Burbank Housing Corporation, Board of Directors, Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District, Metropolitan Water District, and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and Advisory Committee. And we can talk more about term limits when we get to the discussion phase. Another requirement, that members appointed to unexpired terms would need to complete their appointed term before applying for a different BCC. An update to the composition of the youth board to add a member from Lisi International, Lila de Los Angeles, allow all members of the youth board to vote, and to reduce the board from 17 to 15 members, 11 of whom come from designated schools, with four at-large members appointed by council. Number eight, require that all BCC members be residents of Burbank. Number nine, eliminate all non-voting liaison positions from the city's BCCs, a change that currently affects only Sustainable Burbank, the Sustainable Burbank Commission. Representatives from the relevant organizations, such as the Burbank Unified School District, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Airport Authority are encouraged to attend meetings, but their membership would no longer be mandated. And, number 10, for the Art in Public Places Committee, eliminate the requirement to select one member from the business community, as recommended by the Chamber of Commerce, one member from the residential community, and one member selected at large, as this practice has not been observed, in the selection of members. These changes to the Burbank Municipal Code are reflected in Attachment 2, the redlined ordinance. Other incidental changes have been made to the code for consistency and clarity. Unless otherwise directed by the council, these changes will be implemented effective August 1, 2026, in concert with the annual recruitment. If council wishes to apply any of the proposed changes to members assuming terms created by unscheduled vacancies, again, we will need to communicate that to our current and prospective members in our recruitment materials. No member currently serving on a BCC would be removed due to these changes. However, as an example, a currently-serving non-resident would not be eligible to reapply after the ordinance is adopted. Other council-approved administrative changes include changing the name of the Community Development Goals Committee to the Community Development Block Grant Committee, which would better reflect the committee's role, requiring an annual goal-setting meeting for each BCC, and conducting an annual survey of BCC members. Council also authorized staff to consolidate the Art in Public Places Committee with the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission to form the Arts and Culture Commission. This change will be presented to council by Parks and Recreation as a separate item at a later date. As approved by council on July 15, discussion of changing the name of the landlord-tenant commission will return to council at a later date as well. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, in addition to the questions previously submitted.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do we have any public comment for this item?
We do not.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, let's, how about we do this? How about we start with just questions first, and then after that, anyone who wants to poll one of them can poll for discussion, and we'll just focus on that one until it's done. and we'll just focus on that one until it's done and then move on. Okay, so anyone have any questions first for the city clerk? Yeah, Councilmember Anthony?
The term limits, this is full-term consecutive term. So they would have to finish out 12 years, then they couldn't reapply, but they could apply two years later when a seat comes up again. If we implemented it.
I believe it's what we would like to do.
Right, we're looking for your guidance.
Oh, okay, I mean, yeah, sure. Because I don't want to ban somebody just because they've served 12 years if they want to come back at a certain point. So I'm, yeah, okay, all right.
And we can set it up two years or a year that they come back, but I think two years, taking a break and coming back.
Or, or just not be able to reapply for their incumbent position, that, that's my concern. They, if they do three in a row, they can't reapply for the same seat. If, if a vacancy comes up a month later, I'm okay with them reapplying. It's just them being the incumbent. And I've seen, not just us, but previous boards, previous councils, just appoint the incumbents because they're doing a good job. And so I think by having that, anyway, questions, this is the question. I'm already getting into it.
So as to the, as worded, it is no person may serve more than three consecutive full terms on a single board, commission, or, or committee.
Right.
So you could do two, skip one, and then do a third, or you could do three, skip one, and do a fourth. There would be a question, if they were off for only a month and then they filled a vacancy, that's still a consecutive term, the fact that they were off it for a month. So the question is, what does council want to do? Because if you look at terms, the fact that they missed two months of the next full four-year term, it's still consecutive, it could be.
Yeah, and we can talk about it during deliberation, but my concern is the incumbency point, and, and so I'll talk about that later.
Yeah.
The, number seven, Lila, that's the only school that currently doesn't have a member, right? Providence High, do they have a member?
On the youth board?
On the youth board, sorry.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, Providence High School?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And then, number eight, all members must be Burbank residents. So this makes two changes, one, they're no longer electors of the city, but then there's also no non-residency seats.
Right, two separate issues.
Okay, so we're basically combining it, okay.
Well, really, no, we're not really combining it.
Well, it's in one, it says eight, residency requirement for all BCC members.
You had previously directed that you would like all BCC members to be residents moving forward.
I'm looking at number four as well, so number four and number eight.
Right.
Okay, are two separate, you are correct, it is, you know your ordinance very well. I think, yeah, those are all my questions, that's just what I wanted to clarify, yeah, I'm good.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Mullins?
On page four of the report, removal of non-voting liaison position, I recall that you mentioned there was a law that would actually pass, or a bill that passed that would not require them to be a voting member any longer, that they can actually, and so I was wondering if, what, I tried to look for it, but I couldn't really get my hands on it, so I was wondering if that, what that law is and if we can include that as part of our language.
You said non-voting member, but do you mean elector?
Yes.
Okay.
Non-voting liaison position.
Oh, wait a minute, no, we're talking about two separate things.
Where's, where's the elector?
Number four.
Number four, okay, residential elector requirement, okay. Remove the requirement for membership. So under number four then, would it be, there is that law that passed, I recall that, so if we can add that, the language based on the law, based on the bill that was passed?
Right, so at the first step report, you did request to remove that requirement.
It was due to the passing of the law.
To the passage of a law.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, where would you like the, for the ordinance, would you like us to have like a parenthetical?
Uh, let me see, where, where would it be in, for the red?
Attachment 2, page four, section 2-1-407.
Yeah. The resident, uh, is it 407? 2-1-407?
Residency, that's residency.
Yeah.
Where's the elector line?
The elector is struck from that same paragraph, attachment two.
Oh, I see.
Attachment two is the red line.
Okay.
Oh, see.
So we took out the elector and we just said, and within restriction of boundaries. So this is, we're just removed it instead of leaving it in there. So I'm wondering if it's necessary to even put the bill or the law that passed.
I mean, we do have a copy.
Which, and it changes, so it's fine.
If anyone asks, we do have a copy of the Assembly Bill.
Right, as long as, I mean, it's important that we note somewhere, because I looked for it in the staff report, I was like, oh, what is that law that passed, so the public knows that we really did it because of the law.
It's mainly done in the Bay Area, as I recall. It's one of those things where, there's certain, certain, certain jurisdictions.
Okay. Also, I have a question for you, if it's possible, with this, is completion of unexpired term, council added requirement, the members appointed to unexpired term must complete their appointed term before applying for a different BCC. So can you remind us again with the unexpired term? So if somebody is appointed to an unexpired term and they have two years left on that term to end, two years of the four years, does that mean they can't decide to go from that term and apply to say they're serving on Sustainable Commission? They can't decide to apply for a library, for example, until they complete the two years on Sustainable Commission?
That was our understanding of council's direction during the first step, but if you'd like to change that again, we can.
Well, now, I just want to make sure this is our understanding, because we, we've had, we had an email today with a concern of that we're locking somebody in a position they might not be want to, you know, complete the two-year term.
They can always quit, they just can't apply for something else.
So.
I'm not forcing them to come to meetings.
That's the reason I'm, I want to clear.
I recall, I recall your concern was the cascading vacancies.
Right, yes.
You've got two vacancies, and then you have two people apply for those vacancies who are on other boards. You, you appoint them, they create two more vacancies, and the city clerk is then doing appointments or, or trying to fill vacancies every two months they're advertising. So I think that was the concern, and so the way the language is drafted, it's that they must complete the term before applying to serve on another board and commission, but it can be reworded however the council wishes.
Okay, so the, so we would have full understanding, what we mean is they do have to complete the, the term, whether it's a year or two, once they complete that term, then they can go ahead and apply for a different position. And that would be monitored by the city clerk's office, correct?
Correct.
Because we would not be getting the application, you would be providing the denial, no, you can't, because you did not complete your term.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I do have.
Oh, just real quick, and on page four of Attachment 2, it specifically says people appointed to unexpired terms must complete their term. So we're still allowing folks who were appointed to a full term, if they reach two years in or three years in and there's another vacancy open, that person can apply.
Yeah, according to the wording, but we can discuss that.
According to the wording, yeah. But as it's written, this is basically people who are covering an unexpired term, which we're grateful for them to do so, but not so grateful if they try to apply for something else. Anyway, we'll get into it later.
Okay, and then on Attachment 1, it's just, if it's okay, there's some corrections that we need to address on Attachment 1, and it's, it's really mostly old stuff that needs to be cleaned up because we haven't had an ordinance taken to council in so long, so I think it's important that we correct those, this information, which is section 2-1-415D.
Yes, we have a couple of meeting locations that have changed throughout the years, but since it only applies to two BCCs, I would like to propose that we just strike the location information, that way we're not, sorry?
Well, no, this one specifically said, senior citizen who wish to consider for appointment to the board, apply, they need to submit their application to the mayor's office at City Hall, and they need, so basically, the application must go to the mayor's office, and it should, that should change the city clerk.
And then the other question regarding the, the two, the two BCCs, where we list locations, I would propose that we just eliminate the location information, because it does change from time to time, and you'd have to, the reason it requires cleanup is you'd have to bring back an ordinance.
And that, so we have it on the record, we're talking about section 2-1-41AD, which is Burbank Water and Power Board, they do not meet here at City Hall, they meet at BWP campus, but it should say, meeting notice according to the Brown Act, according to, yeah, so whatever their location, their posted location, which is BWP. And the other one is the Transportation Commission, they also don't meet at City Hall, so we need to change that to reflect the meeting location. Okay, those were my questions, or cleanup, that's it? And I, we're gonna make comments, obviously, okay.
All right, Councilmember Rosati, any questions? I don't have any questions either, so how about we do this, how about we poll items that you want to talk about? It sounds like we've got two already. Because if we go through each one, we might end up talking about each one when we may not need to. So if you want to just volunteer which one you'd like to pull up and we can talk about it.
Sure, I mean, the, the one I wanted to talk about, and I don't have questions about it, but I just wanted to talk to my colleagues, the first one is the consistent member composition.
Okay, let's start with that then.
So there's a recommendation to change some of the numbers of members, and I, I get why it would work and why it's recommended, but some of these boards, you know, the people working on these boards do a lot, not just for outreach from the commission that they're on, but they bring a lot to the table. Like, some of these are, you know, I keep using the word multi-disciplinary boards, like infrastructure, water and power, you need people from a varied background, and I don't know if we're going to be able to get that with just five, so going to staying at seven.
We're five members.
Five members right here.
Well, yeah, but like, we're good at this job. I, I don't want, look, the boards serve as advisory to us. I want to make sure that when I'm getting information for us to vote on, and mind you, the charter tells us it's five for us, I want to make sure that we have educated, intelligent, experienced folks sitting in that room to catch things. And not everybody's going to make every meeting, so the moment you go to five and one or two people are missing, well, yeah, you have a quorum, you're going to have the meeting, but you're going to have fewer eyes on the ball. And that, that's my issue. So going from seven to five in a lot of these commissions, I think, is unnecessary. I'm comfortable reducing the Community Development Goals Committee. A lot of the work that they do is basically double-checking staff's work, making sure all of the paperwork is filed, it's basically like oversight. And we don't need nine people to do that. A lot of folks I talked to on CD, the CDBG committee feel like they don't have much to do. So reducing that is fine, but like, senior board, police commission, I don't feel comfortable, I, I haven't heard from those commissioners that they're lacking conversation or that the meetings are dragging on, or, or.
They are.
Yeah.
I mean.
You can tap my spot.
But for me to, to, I, I don't think a reduction in those boards is, is warranted at this point. I, I would like to reach out to the members and get a feel from them, do they think they would be more effective if there were fewer of them in the room? That, that's what I would like to hear from, that, that's why when I saw this reduction, I, I didn't think it was appropriate.
Okay, so just, I took a little note here that you said that CDBG, you're okay reducing, police and senior, you're not.
So all the others, police, library board, water and power, transportation, IOB.
Got it.
I, I don't see any reason for that.
Okay, Councilmember Rosati?
Staff made this recommendation because it's ineffective. And I can just tell you, watching some of these commissions, they are ineffective. It, it needs to be pared down, the discussion needs to be pared down. You have too many people trying to talk or give their point of view. Some of the most important commissions, the Planning Commission, our council, are five people, and they're able to bring smart people to deliberate and show up. You don't need seven, and I just, I think staff is speaking to us, saying, please, you know, let's pare it down and let's be more effective, and I, I, I've witnessed it, I mean, I've seen it. There are commissioners that have come to me and said, I don't know if I can continue to serve because these meetings are going way too long, because there's so many people that want to give their two cents. And I, I totally agree with them, I mean, it's, it should be pared down.
Councilmember Mullins?
Well, I'd like to look at staff, because I know they, they came with that recommendation. This was something, obviously, we talked about, God, how long ago is this, six months or over five months? And those commissions or boards or committees that have seven members, we didn't hear from them until today, and heard from two of them that caught, one called and one showed up, and one email that we received in regards to the unexpired term. And so I'm almost like puzzled if this was an issue and they felt, why are we making this decision? Why did we even talk about it when we talked about it? And emailed us after and said, hey, we don't agree, you not, you're not going to serve the community if you eliminate it. From, we eliminate from seven to five. I think there's a lot of boards and commissions that operate very well with five. Yes, I look at us on council, with our responsibilities, yes, we might be in a different category because we have a different job to do, however, they're focused on one specific issue or multiple issues within that department. I believe, and I want to hear from staff, that having seven members is really unnecessary when, because of the amount of work that goes into it, the amount of preparation that goes into it. And also, I agree with Councilmember Rosati, and, and you and I have said in some of the meetings, you and I were liaisons to a few of them, and we know the frustration where we go through, where there's ongoing dialogue, ongoing conversation, that is so unnecessary and has nothing to do with the topic or the agenda, and the other members are frustrated and they just want to get up and leave because it's a waste of time. So I think the argument that was made earlier, that if you have one or two members are absent, you still have three, you still have a quorum, so the meeting will go on. The only time you would not have a quorum is four of them, or, you know, like, three were absent and now you have two, which, very rare it happens that, you know, in my time, and, and the city clerk can speak to it, that we cancel meetings because of lack of the quorum, once in a while it does happen. I wouldn't be able to be more efficient. It has nothing to do with the members and who we're going to eliminate and who we're not eliminating because we don't know yet, we're not going through this process. But it has to be with efficiency, it has to do with maybe focusing more on the real issues that they need to take action on. with maybe focusing more on the real issues that they need to take action on, and eliminate, really, the unnecessary time spent from staff to write reports, write emails, respond on their behalf, take all the directions, so I think, I'm in agreement with what they presented to us, and we had an opportunity to talk about it a few months back, but I would not give an opportunity, if it's okay, Vice Mayor, to the city manager, to help us with this.
Sure, thank you. So having more boards and commission members obviously does provide a strain on staff. We do have a very large amount of, just number-wise, as far as the number of boards and commissions total in the city, so when you compound that by having a, a lot more members, that, that is certainly something that provides a lot of, uh, more staff resources. One of the things, too, that we're trying to do, and one of the things that the council adopted back in May, as far as your code of conduct, or your expectations of, of boards and commissions, was to dial that down as best we can, to apply a two-hour initial time limit to all boards and commissions, because we were having that issue that we were going over, and, and it was bad for not only the boards and commissioners, but also as well as staff, so, so, and I think that's why we did talk a lot about this at the previous meeting, and that's why we're coming to you with those different recommendations, as far as trying to streamline the process, so we could be more effective and utilize staff as best we can.
To that point, may I ask, you know, there's a number of commissions that already have five members, now, some of them, the nature of their work are just not gonna create as much discussion, so that's one thing, but for the, the ones that, like, park and, park and recreation's already five, planning's already five, let's see, we've got Civil Service Board, although I'm not sure how much they discuss, maybe a little, is five, not many, so, but let's, let's look at just park and rec and planning as examples, are the meetings much tighter, because there's five people versus seven, you think that those meetings, if they had seven, they would be much more, yeah, I would love to hear from Ms. Garcia about the parks and rec as an example, or, no, Ken's not still here, so, yeah, if you, if we had seven at parks and rec, do you think it wouldn't be as tight of a meeting, and how does it affect?
Good evening again, Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation Director, absolutely, we have five members on our Park and Recreation Board, the meetings are never, well, I don't say never, generally, they don't go over two hours, they're pretty tight, you know, we do have agenda items, staff reports, I also have senior board, which is one of the boards that has seven, as well as Cultural Arts Commission and others, and so, certainly the number of board members, the more people you have, the, the longer the meetings are, certainly, we will, you know, whatever the council decides, happy to, to support it, but certainly, our park board, who oversees basically everything, within parks and recreation, their meetings are, they run more efficiently, yes.
Don't move, another question, follow-up, so another board that's under, under your care is the Cultural Arts Commission, and that has nine.
Yes.
And theirs usually is a two-and-a-half hour meeting, two, two-and-a-half hour, depending on, a lot of its presentations, though.
Correct.
So how would you, would you say that they have a pretty tight meeting, and if they had, we're not gonna reduce, we didn't decide to reduce, but just say for the sake of argument that we reduced, do you think that meeting would go a lot shorter if we had fewer people on that board?
It, it could reduce the duration of the meeting, I will say, with the Cultural Arts Commission attending those, because we run them very, very tight, oftentimes commissioners are asked to be very brief in their comments, so if that commission were to be reduced, just by two, going from nine to seven, certainly, the meeting can be run a little bit more, more efficiently, but also, it allows the commissioners to maybe be a little bit more, you know, have a little bit more time to talk, those meetings are basically like, okay, we got 10 minutes on this item, and quick and go, because we're really lucky, we have a lot of public comment at those meetings, presentations, there's a lot that's going on, I will say with that commission, they do have, because of the nature of what they do, they do have a subcommittee, so those are also Brown Act groups, so you'll have a group that will talk about marketing, for example, so they, as is, it's really hard to keep them on, you know, meeting once a month, sometimes they have to have a couple, a few of them will break off and have other conversations, so.
Right, thank you, that does give some context, yeah. And then I'm also a liaison for the sustainability, and that has nine, and that's usually a really tight meeting, so I, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I don't not believe it, at the same time, I think there might be other reasons for meetings going long, too, so I'm kind of on the fence about the seven to five, based on just kind of mixed, mixed information, but is there anything else about this? Yes?
We implemented some changes to our boards and commissions just a few months ago about agenda items, public comment, the roles and responsibilities, it was controversial, we had some commissioners resign and protest, has that changed, have we seen a significant change in our speed, or timing, or, or, like, the work that's being done?
So we're waiting until after they do their reorg, because the focus of those, many of those rules is meeting management, so we need to know who the chairs and vice chairs are, and we're gonna do a training probably in September for chairs, vice chairs, and staff liaison, because it's really how to run meetings, how to have people stick to, you know, rules of debate, and, and those sorts of things.
So, look, I'm not opposed to streamlining some of this, I would like to just see how these new changes affect the meetings, I'd like just this section one to come back in maybe a couple of months, or maybe the first of the year, and, because we're not appointing anybody in the interim, right, the next appointment is when, next July, so we've got about a year, so if it's okay, I would just like to only do the Community Development Goals reduction, and then bring back the rest, and at that point, I want to see what, I'm just talking to my colleagues here, I want to see if these changes help to streamline, and if at that point, there are two, or three, or four of these that still run long, I say those are the ones we talk about, and, and, and reduce those, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, well, I do have a question regarding the ordinance, so then, we adopt it, if, if we agree to that, then we come back again and adopt an updated ordinance with the changes? Is that how it would work? Because if we adopt it, we would have to exclude this section?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we would have to come back, the city clerk will have to bring us another report, another ordinance for discussion at a future date.
That's kind of what I was, do we really want to touch this again, and have another staff report, another meeting, I mean, again, I'm, I'm witnessing and hearing the same thing that staff is advising us, so I just don't know, I don't want to go against that.
And if, and if we pass it tonight, we have one, we have the consent, right, and here's another, another possibility, is we can discuss and decide upon, you know, any or all of them being moved to five, and then, once that's being prepared by the city clerk, I, I think it might be interesting to then go to the commissions and let them know that this is what we decided, and see what their response is, and if we get one commission that's really like, no, that really is gonna mess up our work, then they can come back, and we can, we can adjust that one bit.
You mean on the second reading?
Yeah, on the second reading.
When, when would this come back, the very next meeting, or two meetings from now?
The ordinance was designed to be brought back to you for adoption on August 12th, so next meeting.
Two weeks.
Next meeting, yeah, two weeks from now, next meeting.
They may not all meet, well, we could still talk to them, okay. I, I'm kind of inclined to agree to not poll this, to add another thing to our, but at the same time, I think your points are, you know, important to consider, yeah.
And we're not saying we're gonna eliminate individuals who are serving now, this is through, yeah, attrition, through time, so they may not even apply, so as, as people step down, resign, the term is up, that's when we start eliminating, so this could take...
Serve three consecutive terms.
Yeah, it can take, and, and, yes, get the 25-year members on there, maybe not apply, but this can take actually two to three years.
Right.
So it may not even impact anybody who is serving right now.
And that's actually a point that I have a concern about, is that if we go from seven to five, and we let natural attrition happen, it may be a while before we get anybody new on some of these boards, there's not gonna be new, you know, people being brought in, so just a consideration. Also, I, you know, I, I guess there's like nine different ones that would go from seven to five, and so that's 18 people, 18 people who, 18 spots where we don't have participation from the community, so I also believe in providing as much possible ways for the community to participate, I also, I do want to acknowledge, though, that it is a lot more work when the meetings go long, and we don't want that to happen, so I'm thinking that there's some of these nine that actually do make quite sense to move to five, because they don't really need seven, so art and public places is a good one, doesn't need seven, infrastructure definitely does not need seven, five is fine, and then, let's see...
There's senior board, library, water and power, these are all the ones.
Library board, you know, I was on the library board, and I think, as much as I think there's enthusiasm for that, like, the work could be done by five very easily, just a matter of how much participation do we want there, I think that could go either way, and they'd be sad probably to go down to five, but I think the work that they do, because I was on that for two years, that would be fine with five, I contacted a couple people on BWP, and they were in favor of seven, because they felt that it was a good variety of voices, but that is, a lot of what they do is around policy and budgets, around, like, just not policy, but decisions for the power, water and power, and so that seems like, kind of similar to planning.
Would you, would you be comfortable working off of the, the list here that we have? Because I know you're going through the full list of boards, but they're only recommending a handful here.
Yeah, I, I made a note of all the ones that are changing.
Okay.
So, and, so I'm wondering if maybe it might be worthwhile to, if there's a couple in particular that you think is a good argument to not go down to five, and then let the other ones go down to five, or do you think that's worth it?
Well, so, that's what I'm saying, I started this with, we didn't ask the commissions, we haven't got...
Why are we asking commissions?
Well, I, I know, I know they're all gonna say, well, I want to protect my thing, but, but for them to, like, argue to us, oh, we need seven because of XYZ, not because I want to keep my spot, like, that doesn't hold water, but for them to say, look, we've got somebody who is an expert in this, and somebody who's an expert in this, on this board, look, at, at the end of the day, I think what you're suggesting is fine, if we, if we simply keep it as is, take the staff recommendation, we have two weeks to have outreach, to ask the boards and commissions, hey, if you really want to talk to us or fight for this, come down here on the podium, email us, tell us what you think, again, three emails, three commenters debated this, if nobody's really interested in stopping it, then it's fine. My, my concern is, if we go through and nitpick one by one, then we're showing favoritism, if staff is saying these are the boards that need to go because of efficiency, then that's the boards that need to go because of efficiency, I don't want to play favorites.
Yeah, well, I, for me, it's not about playing favorites, it's about recognizing the work that they do on the boards, and figuring out how many people we need to do that work, and what's appropriate for that, for that particular board.
For that particular board, okay.
Yeah, and that's why sustainability and arts, for example, I argued last time to keep it at nine, because they do quite a lot outside of the meeting itself, and they need that number of people in order to accomplish all the stuff that they're doing outside the meeting, and I actually would make that similar argument for police, they're not quite as active as sustainability and arts, but they do have some things that they do outside the meeting, I, I think that would be one, if there were any of them here, I would make an argument for keeping it seven, I think police might be the one, simply because the amount of work that they do is not just going to the meeting, it's, it's more to it, so it's not just about keeping the meeting efficient, it's about having enough people to do, like, the, the driver safety, and the car seat safety, and the other things that they're doing, so I think that's important to have enough people for that, but the other ones, I could, I could go either way on.
Well, I think the city manager wants to say something.
Can I just clarify, real quick, just to clarify, we are not, we are coming back with the cultural arts and art and public places at a future meeting, so that one is, because if you recall, there was a whole discussion about how to kind of meld that, and we're just not there yet, so we're, so those two, I just want to make sure to clarify that that's not for, that's for a future discussion.
Got it, okay, but the sustainability is staying at nine, sustainability is staying at nine, that's one, that is an example, but good point, thank you. So I would, I think that if, if there's any of them here, that I, as a, like, policymakers in, like, deciding how many people we want on these boards to do the kind of work that they're doing, I think police would be one that I would argue for seven, but the other ones, I'm, I feel like we could, we could go to five, and they probably would be, they would be okay, it'd be sad, not that much participation, but functionality-wise, they could, they would be fine.
I think, Vice Mayor, you need to take a pulse for, because I hear you advocating for certain ones that you serve on, or because you have an idea what they might or might not do, we are liaisons, some of us all serve on different committees or commissions, and we attend those meetings, I don't attend sustainable meetings, so I don't know exactly what goes on in that meeting, so I trust you that you're saying, yeah, they're very tight, and they're efficient at what they do, and it's not about how tight it is the meeting is running, it's also the value that they bring to the table, and what, what comes out of that, what do we learn, what comes to council, are they following council's goals or not, are they going against what council set here and deliberated for hours to set goals, and to take a vote on action items that we discussed here, and I, if we are gonna advocate for other boards and commissions that we're not liaisoned for, I better start attending your sustainable, and you better attending, you know, the transportation, and then the police, and we, we start rotating, the reason we serve on, as liaisons, because we see what goes on, and we have a better understanding, whether this needs to be a seven member or five member, because we witness the waste of time, we witness that the lack of, you know, certain people participate a lot more than others, and certain people can't even speak at these meetings, because it's been dominated by two or three individuals in the meetings, and then staff had come to us and said, we're having issue, it's a lot of work, we need you to take a look at it, and none of us, were you here, Councilmember Rosati, when we started this discussion, I can't remember, okay, when you said, let's reach out to boards and commissions, I have personally spoken to the members that I rep, you know, I sit on the liaisons and said, watch the meeting, call, come down here and, and voice your opinion, okay? It didn't happen.
For which, the ones that you're liaisoned to?
Yes, and it didn't happen, nobody else, I think it was on the agenda, they're very involved, staff had told them, from my understanding, that council is discussing it, we don't get any feedback, so this is not a surprise, obviously, today was the day, ooh, you know, we had two members show up saying, you know, please don't do it, but I think we need to be efficient, we're not being efficient at these meetings, so I don't want to go by, well, you know, these people are tight in the meeting, these people are not tight, we're speaking from experience.
Yes.
And it's not about eliminating anyone in particular, or we have something against a special person, or two or three people, we're trying to assist staff, we're trying to be efficient, and we're trying to do a good job for the community to, to actually do the job they're being assigned to do, so I, I take it very seriously when I'm, I serve on, as a liaison, I see some of the boards that I sit on, there's about five or six staff members sitting in that room for the seven board members, and it's a complete waste of time, because there's really nothing coming out of that, except providing reports, providing reports, providing reports, and what are we doing with all these reports? So, do we have seven staff members that have nothing else to do in the organization? Absolutely not, these individuals are very busy, so maybe we can have two or three staff members attending to accommodate five people instead of seven people.
So am I hearing you saying that the police commission, that you don't feel that's, you feel that five members is enough to do the work that they do, and that's, they don't need seven?
I'm looking...
And that's, they don't need seven to do the extra things?
I'm looking at senior citizen board. I'm looking at transportation. Those are the ones. And then water and power and, and the library, because you mentioned, because you served on the library. So I can't speak for that. So I trust your judgment because you served on there. I do understand the water and power because of their expertise and, um, we don't even have a liaison for water and power.
No, we don't.
Which is very odd because we've never had one.
Can I offer something? I, I know this is gonna come back for a second reading. And I don't think at this point we are ready to single one or two out. I say, we take staff's recommendation, the ones that are listed, Community Development Goals Committee from nine to seven. All the ones that they want to bring from seven to five, library, water and power, IOB, police, senior citizen, transportation. Take it at face value and say, okay, bring back second reading, go from seven to five. In the interim, we have two weeks. Let's hear from our commissioners, see if they want to come down and, and, and change our minds. If nothing happens, if everybody says fine, then we take it as is. If police commissioners feel we can do it with five, let's do it with five. I don't want to go through, uh, because we're gonna be here late.
It's not, it's not their job.
It's not our job. It's staff's job.
Yeah, they'll advise us and it's our job.
And of course, they're not gonna wanna.
Right. And I'm saying, we'll come back in two weeks.
We have to be efficient.
I, I'm gonna take staff at their word. And if nobody convinces me otherwise, it is our job to sit here and say, this is what staff is working on. So I'm gonna take them as listed. And let's just move on and we'll, we have to vote on this again in two weeks anyways.
Okay. I think I agree with that. And I, I still am looking at, I would love to learn more about the police commission in particular because that one is the one that I feel like, uh, just because they do work outside of the commission, like to.
But what, what do they do outside of the commission? I mean, really, I mean, what is it that they're doing outside of the commission? The car seat safety thing Nick Schultz brought to me and said, and I, he mentioned it to me and I said, we'd like to partner with you. So how it got to the police commission, I don't know, but that was something that was brought to council.
I think it's the driving safety campaign, not the car seat.
And then connecting with the police outside of the commission and other things. But I only hear from a handful of them and I've only seen if, like, since I've been on council, I've only watched maybe five or six of them. So I don't know everything that they do, just hearing from them and seeing them everywhere. So maybe, maybe I do have an incorrect view of what they do outside of the commission, but I just know.
I just want to understand because I'm not, I'm very confused about, the driver safety thing is initiated by one person on that. And it's not, is it a police commission thing or is it a Romic thing?
Again, our message from the May sixth meeting is to now do training and come back. And every first meeting is going to be the council goals and priorities.
Yeah.
If they're doing anything, it should be towards moving your goals and priorities.
Got it. Okay. Okay.
Yeah. So I'd say let's move on from one, let's keep it as is. What staff has recommended, I'm happy with now. If something changes our minds in two weeks, we have, we have another opportunity.
Okay.
Uh, number two, attendance policy. This was, this was basically after a member had missed three. Do you guys remember that? Were you here for that? Were they missed three? No, you weren't here for that. A member had missed three and we had to hold a whole hearing to see if we wanted to pull them off or not. It was a whole mess. Attendance retract in 12 month period. Yeah, that's fine.
Are you pulling this one to talk about or are you?
I don't think, because I think it's, it's good as is. Yeah.
Who else would like to pull one of the?
Is too good? Yeah.
Who else would like to pull one of the numbers?
I don't want to pull anything.
No? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a, a recommendation for, um, number five, the term limits for BCC. So it, it does indicate here that the, we'd start the term limit would be applied to full term appointments beginning August 1st, 2026. We just made appointments effective August 1st. They're gonna take office 2025. I'd like to start it with 2025 because that gives them, the, the new appointed members starting in August will be starting their first four year term for the next 12 years. And then in August of 2026, when we get the new set of members appointed, then it starts their 12 years from that point.
Okay.
So we will need some guidance regarding whether you want those changes on term limits to apply to those council appointed. I know, I know people were walking back and forth a little bit when I was presenting, but I did mention that we have these council appointed representatives to Burbank Glendale Pasadena Airport, Burbank Housing Corporation, Greater Vector, Los Angeles County Vector Control, Metropolitan Water District. These are sometimes one and two people. And I just was thinking today that I have a little bit of a concern that although all of our BCCs require expertise in their field, these particularly, I'm just concerned, um, it's council's decision of course, but if we were to lose one of them, would it be difficult to find somebody who wants to serve on vector control? Maybe, maybe not. So I need direction. We need direction on whether you want the term limits to apply to all of them or just the city guided BCCs, just the ones that are city initiated.
My concern is not necessarily those specific boards, but that somebody who has already served 12 years would get another 12 years starting this week or next, next year. So it says terms served prior to August 1st would not count. So if somebody's been on a, a board for 10, 15 years, they get another 12 years starting next year?
Yep.
Like, I'm not, I'm not cool with that.
Well, because I don't, unless you want to roll back, uh, from 12 or 10 years from their appointment date. But it's really typically when there's term limits, it starts effective today, moving forward. So you can't count what they already served prior to that.
We can count whatever we want.
Well, you can, but I don't know how are you gonna count each individual.
You also are making the appointment, so you don't have to appoint that person again.
You're gonna make me do math during a council appointment?
No, I'm just saying, you, you don't have to appoint the same person. I.
So let me ask you this then. I, I hear you what you're saying. Are you able to tell us how many consecutive terms a person has served when they come back in July?
Yes, we have a chart right now, handy tonight.
It says the original appointment date.
Oh, that's right. It does say that. So again, I gotta do math. I gotta count 12 years. Okay.
I, I think we, we can't really roll back the time and say, because you still, I, I know what you mean because there are some that have served 20, 25 years. But I think we need to move forward from here. Maybe you don't want to make it 12. Maybe you want to make it eight. I don't know. But we can't really roll back. I, I think we need to move forward.
And then my other point, the AQMD, vector control, uh, um, housing corporation appointment, the three seats on the Burbank Airport Authority. Are any of those people served more than 12 years already? I don't think any.
Dr. Wesson, he's, he's served on vector control since I, when I started as the city clerk, he was still on.
Twenty years.
I don't, and he's the only one that usually applies.
Yeah, I think Marcia's been, uh, 10.
I think Mar, yeah, Marcia Ramos is at least, this is her second, so eight.
All right. So what happens, what happens if nobody applies? If there's someone who's served 12 years on a commission, nobody applies, do we go back out? Is that person allowed to apply again then? Cause it's not a consecutive term? Cause now their term is ended?
As I indicated before, it's a consecutive term. There is no term in between their last term and the new term. You just didn't have candidates.
That's right.
Except this isn't like normal term limits. Normal term limits prevent a candidate from being voted by the electors into office because it goes to the qualifications. What putting this language in the code does is it, it tells the council, you can't vote for that person. But unlike, uh, term, term limits for elected officials, all the council has to do is revise the ordinance. So you could have your own policy that you have term limits, that you can waive. You put it in the code and you should not make that appointment until you revise the code or you make them sit out.
Okay. So we can have term limits basically, and then in say, uh, uh, unless, unless no other applicant is available or something to that effect. Like we, we give ourselves an out. Like, I mean.
I, I think, I, I think that policy is an interesting idea. Because a policy gives us, uh, you know, basically guidance without having to put it in the code in complexity. Just simply say, that's our policy is that.
Council should prioritize candidates over anyone who's served three consecutive terms.
Right. Like that, that's our policy is to not appoint, unless there happens to be no one else. We, we could always break our policy, but our policies we generally follow unless there's a reason not to. And that would at least give us attention on it so that it would not be ignored. It would be considered as like a part of our decision making and clear for the people who are applying.
Madam City Clerk, is that appropriate for us to put that language in where rather than it's a 12 year term limit, it's council should prioritize folks over people who have served three consecutive terms?
If you're not going to restrict yourselves, I recommend you adopt it by resolution, maybe in your expectations. Rather than put it in the ordinance.
Yeah.
You put in the ordinance, those things you wish to bind yourself to.
Okay.
You are not eligible unless you're a resident, period. You don't waive that. It's in your ordinance. Unless you find you're not getting people anymore or you're not getting, there's, you know, you don't have any bicycle advocates and there's a group right outside that has advocates. So you need to revise your rules so you can get people with that expertise. I mean, that's where you would relieve that resident requirement, but you're actually just now taking it out. So, but if you're not gonna bind yourself to it, I would put it in your council expectations and we might maybe retitle it or give it another.
So look, I, I, I like how it is written. And the only reason why is because I don't think we're gonna hit that problem. If we do, then we can come back and visit it. But I would like to bind it under an ordinance. And the only reason is, is because our current vector control guy, I think he like, is it?
Two thousand and seven, he was appointed.
But isn't he like, but isn't he a doctor of like ophthalmology or something or, or dentist or something? I can't remember.
I don't think vector control is in the code and it's not a board or commission.
They are not.
It's a single appointee. Same thing within WD.
Yeah.
All right. Then forget it. Yeah, 12 years.
We're, we're only talking, just to clarify, we're, I only brought up those five single, they're single and sometimes there's two people. Those kind of oddball groups, they are not really, we call them, we have them under the umbrella of our 23 boards and commissions, but they actually aren't true boards and commissions. For example, Marcia Ramos is one of 26 appointees who serves on the Metropolitan Water District. She just happens to be our city's appointee to that board.
But is our appointment for that board under our BCC?
It, it is loosely, yes, but it is not part of the BMC to city attorneys appoint.
We put in a 12 year maximum, is that gonna affect her automatically?
That was my question to you that we need.
No, it's not in the code.
It's not in the code.
Forget it.
And the appointees, I believe, to the airport authority are under the joint powers agreement for the airport authority.
All right. Great. We wasted 10 minutes on this.
Are you proposing that we keep it as putting it in the code or are you?
It's, but here's perfect. Keep it in the code, ordinance.
And we can add effective August 1st, 2025 appointees.
Yes.
And it, if, I know the city attorney can weigh in, but I think, um, maybe the city clerk, when you bring back the ordinance for second reading, we would be voting on it when we, uh, get the second reading with the August date.
Okay. And the clarification from council, if I may ask you all, is this a 12 year consecutive term on any board and commission? Or just one in particular?
All of them.
All of them.
So any, if they move around, it's 12 years on any, okay. To make that clear. I don't know if that's clear in the wording.
Sorry, sorry. I'm not understanding. They have 12 years in, on any?
Single board.
Yes, you can move.
Okay.
You can do 10 and then eight.
That's what I thought that it said. So I wanted to get clarification from the council. Do you want that for just one single board, 12 years? Or that if they're like on four on transportation and then four on library?
One in a row.
Just keep going?
One in a row.
So this is just for one single board?
Yeah. Cause I think this, the entire reason this was brought up, going back to what I mentioned earlier, is about incumbency. We see the name, they've served already, they're doing a fine job. Great. You get appointed again.
So if they moved to another.
That way we're not the bad guy. You served 12 years. Hey, sorry, it's out of our hands. You're done.
So if they moved to another board, the clock resets. Okay. Do make clarification. Okay. Are we done with that item? Are there any other ones that you guys want to discuss? Okay. I have one, one quick one for number, let's see. For the second section, uh, where it says, uh, other council approved administrative changes. Number three, the survey, I just wanted to double check that the survey is anonymous survey. Oh, sorry. It's on page four of the staff report in the second, it's like after 10, there's three more.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi, uh, we can certainly, um, have the survey be, uh, anonymous if that is council's direction. Uh, that the survey has not been, um, produced yet. It would largely fall on, um, Public Works and Parks and Rec for input since they oversee the largest number of boards and commissions.
Could I ask one caveat to that? That we know what board or commission they're from. That way, if we see multiple folks talking about a single board and there's an issue, we know it's from them.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
But the name anonymous.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. And then, um, number six, hold on. Read my notes here. For the unex, for number six, for the unexpired terms, you must complete before you can switch to another board or apply to another board. Just a quick question for that and council, what, what your thinks, uh, what you think about this is if somebody is on an unexpired term, let's say that it's a three year long one, and after two years they step down to take a break or something, or they quit that board for some reason, can they then apply to another board? Cause it's just the way it wor, it's worded, makes it sound like if you're, don't finish your term, then you're, you have to finish it.
I think the only issue is applying for another open vacancy while you're serving on another board.
Okay. So the wording.
If you want to step down, step down. That's.
Right. Um, yeah, there's some.
Or you could consider whether that means they don't really want to serve.
Right. Oh, it'll weigh on their appointment. Like, wait, didn't you just quit?
Make sure it's clear. So the wording just makes it, for me, it's ambiguous of whether they, they have to finish their term before they then apply again to make sure it's clearly, if they do quit and they want to reapply later, like they have a family emergency or just some reason, stuff doesn't work on their schedule anymore, that they later on can apply. They don't have to finish that term. It's okay. All right.
And I, and I just want to make sure that we clarify that, um, why we're doing it. Because we often, again, because of the email that we received, um, we, we often, I believe, see individuals that they get appointed to boards and commissions, especially during, you know, the month when we have the majority of them open. And they had first and second choice, for example, and we end up appointing them to their second choice and they really don't like it. And so, um, they don't want to serve. And so it creates another vacancy and it creates another advertisement, another, another appointment. And so this is where I think individuals, hopefully somebody's listening, that when you do apply, really consider your first and second choice because if you will be appointed to one or you're filling in an unexpired term, you need to be serious about it because unless you want to resign and, and then apply again. So there is a reason why we put that in there.
Well, this is only for unexpired terms.
Yes, right. But I'm saying, um,
Makes sense.
You know, once somebody's in first, second choice, they take it, they fill in unexpired term, it's.
It's the leapfrogging around.
Exactly.
Cascading effect was there earlier. Yeah.
The, the only thing I want to ask of the city clerk, uh, which is gonna add, um, additional, maybe additional information provided to us when we're doing the appointments. We would need to know, like some, let's say somebody served on the sustainable, resigned after six or seven months. And then there's an opening now on another board. I think it's important to know that this person served on the sustainable or transportation, uh, from what period.
That's a great suggestion and I, I would further suggest that we add that to the application form. Please list other boards you've served on.
Have you served on any other boards and commissions?
And the dates.
And the, and the dates or even you have the dates that you, you provide us with the original appointment.
Yeah, that'd be good information to have. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Cause we asked them if they've served, but we don't ask them what year.
That's true. We just.
Right. To just add the first date, first year of appointment.
And then what, what, if it's, if it's okay for you guys to double check and make sure that they are accurate with those numbers.
A lot of people don't even remember too. If they've been off for a while, they might not remember.
Yeah.
Thank you. Cause I think it would be helpful for us when we.
Yeah. And then also if it, um, when, when folks are applying as part of the application, somewhere in there to make that clear when they're applying, if they're applying for an unexpired term, that this is. term, that this is what the case is.
Yes.
And when, and for regular, our regular July appointments, that it's clear that that's not, yeah, just like, it's a little confusing already, the, applying for commissions are confusing to new folks anyway, um, just to have it in the documentation so that, I'm sure you'll add it, but just to make it clear when they're applying.
And then we should probably announce that too during the meeting. Whenever we do, uh, unexpired term appointments, we should mention at the beginning.
Yeah.
If you get appointed, you must serve to com, to complete the term.
Yeah.
Before you can apply.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Anything else? Okay. I think we did it.
Yeah.
Wow.
I just want to revisit the areas that we needed further clarification. So we are not, we're not applying the term limits to the vector control, et cetera, right?
Shouldn't count, yeah.
Okay. Um, you're, we are going to have the term limits for the other BCCs become effective August 1st, 2025.
Right.
So for the, uh, so we just need a little guidance on, because currently, right now, we are act, I'm actively swearing people in and giving them the oath of office, reappointed members and new members. Counsel does not want the current term to count towards the term limits. That's what needs clarification, because we're kind of, if it goes into effect August 1st, 2025, how does that affect the people whose term is starting?
Well, they start.
August 1st.
They start their term August 1st, even though we probably adopt this in two weeks. So we're only talking about two weeks before adoption. So if you want to inform them, uh, that terms start, that council adopted and, you know, will be adopting an ordinance and starting August 1st, your first appointment, this is counting towards your 12 years.
But she's, she's already sworn a bunch of people in that she hasn't told.
Maybe an email would be sent out.
Right. We were.
But you're saying this is the beginning of 12 years.
Yeah.
Right.
Is it urgent?
There, there.
Like.
I mean, there's.
They've got to make a decision at least two more times.
Right.
Exactly.
I mean, I didn't think it was going to be like something significant, because they have 12 years, three terms. So I think they'll be fine.
Yeah. Are we going to go past the 11 o'clock?
No.
We're going to do it. We're almost done. We're almost done. Okay. So any other clarification, Madam City Clerk, that you need?
There was three areas. Did we get all three?
Okay.
Oh, I think we're good.
And then really quick question, when do you expect the two future agenda items? You said by the end of the year, they would, the, the consolidation of the two.
The consolidation will be handled by Parks and Rec, so I would like Director Garcia address that one.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, Director Garcia, Parks and Recreation. So we're looking at bringing back the, uh, potential consolidation of, of those two boards in the fall, uh, later this fall, um, prior to the end of the calendar year.
Okay. It, do you expect to be discussing it with both bodies to see?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Good. Love to get their feedback on how they think it would be a good way to transition. Great. And then landlord-tenant commission, uh, changes will be during the October presentation of all that material? Okay, great.
Uh, probably not.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because, um, it's not directly related to the tenant protections and caps. It's really what's left for them to do and what's that future mission. So I, I don't think it's essential and because we have a recusal, um, uh, you know, it's, it's something that, that I don't think is necessarily affected by that.
Okay.
In other words, we might be able to segment that so that Councilmember Rosati could participate.
Right. Good point. Okay. So it may come sooner then.
No. I don't think it's going to, it's not going to come sooner.
It'll come later.
Because the same people are working on a staff report for all five components.
Got it.
So that's going to come first.
Got it.
And then we would bring that back.
Great. Okay. Great. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion? Yeah, Councilmember Anthony.
Uh, I'll, uh, move to introduce an ordinance of the council, the city of Burbank, amending and restating Title II, Chapter 1, Article 4, Boards, Commissions and Committees of the Burbank Municipal Code relating to Boards, Commissions and Committees in Attachment 1, including the, uh, discussion items we talked about and the cleanup items, uh, from Councilmember Mullins. And then two, approve various administrative changes to the city's boards, commissions and committees.
Second. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good job, everyone. Moving on to council comments.
I can go quick.
Okay.
Uh, on Sunday, uh, I saw the vice mayor at the Batya Sport opening. The Parks and Rec had the, um, disabled, uh, uh, Batya Ball, uh, grand opening, and that was really fun and I had to play with my left hand, so that was very interesting. Uh, and then, uh, yesterday, I went to the grand opening for a secondhand boutique store on Burbank Boulevard called That's What She Shed. Shed, like she gave it away. That's what she shed. Uh, very cool little boutique spot.
All right. Councilmember Rosati, go ahead.
Uh, on Wednesday, the 16th, I attended Eric's Suite Creations. Um, nice young couple opened up a, uh, bakery, and I love the location, because there's really not much on that side of town, on Clyburn and Victory. So it's all the way, it's the last street in Burbank, and there's really not a lot in that neighborhood, so I'm really glad for the, for the people that live over there. Um, and then, uh, that night, I went to the police commission meeting. And on Friday, the 18th, uh, I did not go to that. On the 22nd, um, I attended the BRT meeting at the library. On the 24th, I, uh, 26, I attended, uh, the Red Sand Project with, uh, Councilmember Mullins and Vice Mayor Takahashi. And, um, today I did a walkthrough at, uh, DeBel Golf Course, just to kind of look at